Good morning. The meeting on the Committee on Health is now called to order. May we request everybody to please stand up for the invocation?
invocation. Lord, we turn to you again seeking your will in this meeting, confident that you are with us to guide us all throughout the day. Help our resource persons and experts by giving them wisdom and knowledge, Lord. We stand before you with hope, trusting in your care, guidance, and protection. May your faithful love support us all. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Next is the uh calling of the uh the role.
Mr. Chair.
Uh honorable Ako.
May I respectfully move that we dispense with the calling of the role, so move Mr. Chair.
Second emotion?
There's a motion to dispense with the calling of the role and duly seconded. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Um. Next is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Sir Chair.
Yes, honorable.
I I move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting and dispense the reading of it.
There's a move to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the approval of the same. Uh duly seconded, hearing an objection, the same is approved. At this point, we'd like to uh acknowledge the members of the committee uh here in this uh meeting. Um. Honorable Agustina Dominic Dichi Tina Pancho of the uh Second District of Bulacan. Um. Honorable um Romeo Ako, the Chair of the Committee on Transportation of the Second District of Antipolo City. Honorable Dante Garcia of the Second District of La Union. Honorable Woo Fortes of the Second District of Sorcegon. And Honorable Deputy Majority Leader Wilter Palma of the First District of Sambuangga Zibugay. Thank you very much. Um we now call the uh Comsec to please acknowledge our resource uh uh persons this morning. Good morning, Chair, honorable members of the committee. In attendance as resource persons for today's meeting are the following. From the Department of Health, the Health Facility Development Bureau, Dr. Bito Inreias. From the same department, uh from the Health Facilities and Services Regulatory Bureau, Director Anet Pan. From the Department of Health, Philippine Blood Center, Doctor If Tizar Haron. Morning ma'am. Uh from the Philippine Red Cross, Doctor Kristi Monina M. Nalupta. Uh from the Philippine Blood Coordinating Council. Um Mr. Edri Alcansare. Yeah. Uh Philippine Blood Center. Good morning. Uh from the Department of Budget and Management, Mr. Reynaldo Moreno and Ms. Julian Dominguiano. And uh from the Philippine Hospital Association, Doctor Enmundo Lopez. That would be all, Chair. Thank you, Comsec. Good morning once again, distinguished members of the committee and esteemed guests. In the agenda of the committee meeting for today are six bills of national significance that seek to strengthen Republic Act Number 7719, otherwise known as the National Blood Services Act of 1994, as well as the establishment of the Philippine Blood Disease and Transfusion Center. The committee deems this proposed legislation as one of its priorities. Cognizant that blood is essential to life and without it or the lack of it would imperil human life or even precipitate the obliteration of the human race. Also on the agenda of the committee meeting for today are hospital bills that are of vital importance in the delivery of health services in various parts of the country. So we now proceed with the committee deliberation on these legislative proposals. Um. But before I proceed, may we now uh acknowledge the presence of Honorable Marisa Delmar Maxino of the OFW party list. So first, we now call on the uh proponent of House Bill Number 3348, uh Honorable PM Vargas. If. Yeah. Is there anyone who was uh designated to sponsor in his behalf? PM Vargas.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Ako.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh may I move that the uh explanatory note of the Honorable Vargas be considered as his sponsorship speech, so move Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh honorable Ako. Uh we will um allow the uh sponsorship of the all the bills relating related to the Philippine Blood Center. And then after this, uh we will now call on the resource speakers to uh present their position. So next is uh House Bill Number 3457 by Honorable Manuel Woo Fortes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I move, Mr. Chair, that the explanatory note of my House Bill 3457 entitled "An Act Establishing the Philippine Blood Center, Defining Its Objectives, Powers, and Functions, and Appropriating Funds Thereoff", that the said explanatory note be adopted as my sponsorship speech, Mr. Chair. So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Fortes. Uh next is House Bill Number 4005 by Representatives Luis Raymond L. Ray Villa Ferte Junior, Miguel Luis R. Villa Ferte, Chioshi Anthony G. Oribata, and Nicolas Nick Insi So the Eighth. Um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, honorable Ako.
May I respectfully move that the uh the uh explanatory notes of House Bill Number 4005 uh authored by the Honorables L. Ray Villa Ferte, Miguel Luis Villa Ferte, Chioshi Oribata, and Honorable Nick Insi So the Eighth, be considered as their sponsorship speech, so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Ako. Uh next is House Bill Number 7872 by Honorable Waldo.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Honorable Dante Garcia.
May I move for the adoption of the explanatory note of House Bill Number 7872, so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Dante Garcia. Next is House Bill Number 8820 by Honorable Gloria Macapagal Arroyo.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Palma.
Uh on behalf of uh the Honorable Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, I move that her explanatory note will serve as her sponsorship speech, so move, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Palma. And uh last is the House Bill Number 9452 by Honorable Ron Salo, uh yes, Honorable Pancho.
Uh Mr. Chair, I move that the House Bill 9452 be the explanatory note of representative Pisalo be considered as the sponsorship remarks.
Thank you, Honorable Pancho. We now uh listen to the position paper, opposition of the uh our resource uh speakers this morning, first on the list. Uh Doctor Bito Inre- Reyes of the Health Facility Development Bureau of the Department of Health, you are now recognized. Oh, sorry, uh Director Anet Tan of the Health Facilities and Services Regulatory Bureau, you are now recognized.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, and to the honorable representatives of this committee. I'll be reading actually the position paper of the Department of Health in behalf of the Secretary of Health. Uh "An Act Amending Republic Act Number 7719, Otherwise Known As the National Blood Services Act of 1993, Promoting Voluntary Blood Donation, Providing for an Adequate Supply of Safe Blood, Regulating Blood Bank, and Providing Penalties for Violation Thereoff and for Other Purposes." House Bill Numbers 3457 and 4005 "An Act Establishing the Philippine Blood Center, Defining Its Objectives, Powers, and Functions, and Appropriating Funds Therefore." House Bill Number 7872 "An Act Establishing a Philippine Blood Services Network and Promoting Safe and Adequate Blood Su- Supply in All Blood Centers Nationwide." House Bill Number 8820 "An Act Promoting the Adequate Supply of Blood Plasma, Authorizing the Collection, Storage, and Commercial Distribution of Blood Plasma and for Other Purposes." The Department of Health supports the proposed measures which seek to institutionalize a Philippine Blood Services Network and the creation of a Philippine Blood Center. This is aligned with the Universal Healthcare Act and the Eight Point Action Agenda of the Department of Health, wherein the bills contribute to ensuring the establishment and sustainability of a public health system capable of providing high-quality, safe, and people-centered health services and facilities across the nation. The Philippine Health Facility Development Plan, or PHFDP, 2020 to 2040 has already incorporated the necessary steps to guarantee the full implementation of universal healthcare through healthcare provider networks, or HCPNs, which shall be linked to an apex and end repairal hospital and other facilities, providing specialized services needed by its catchment population. Under the PHFDP, blood centers, or the BCs, and blood services facilities, or the BSFs, operate under the Blood Services Networks, or we term BSNs, which are envisioned to be integrated within and across the HCPNs. The Philippine National Blood Service is composed of various BSFs of blood services facilities owned and operated by the Department of Health, various local government units, private organizations, and the Philippine Red Cross. In addition, pursuant to the Republic Act Number 7719, or the National Blood Services Act of 1994, the DOH is mandated to establish and organize a national blood transfusion service network to improve the provisions of adequate and safe supply of blood. All blood centers shall be strategically established in every province and city nationwide within the framework of the existing National Blood Transfusion Service Network. The Department of Health currently owns and operates the following blood centers: two sub-national blood centers in Region 7, Cebu, and Region 11, Davau; and two regional blood centers which includes the Philippine Blood Center serving as the regional blood center for the national capital region. Additionally, the PRC and local government unit owns and operate thirty-three regional, provincial, city, and interprovincial, intercity blood centers. The Department of Health through the PHFDP aims to develop at least one DOH blood center in every region and is estimated to cost a total of 3.534 billion by 2023. In view of the foregoing, the Department of Health reiterates that it interposes no objection to the establishment of the Philippine Blood Center and Regional Blood Centers and submits the following recommendations. First, refer to the proposed establishment of the Philippine Blood Center and Regional Blood Centers as the creation of standalone health facilities with specific geographic considerations pursuant to the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan and existing BSNs. This blood center shall be designated as the lead blood service facility and shall have responsibility to conduct close supervision of each satellite BSF within each BSN. Place the blood centers under the direct control and supervision of the Centers for Health Development to strengthen its role as implementers of the regional BSN and further rationalize BSFs. This can guarantee adequate, accessible, and safe blood supply in the region. This will also clearly define the roles and responsibilities of the blood service facilities and identify their scope and territorial jurisdiction. Third is to allow lead blood service facility in coordination with the Center for Health Development to formulate their development plans and remain consistent with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. This is to access capital outlay investment through the Health Facility Enhancement Program of the Department of Health and other sources of funding such as from the developmental partners through international grants or aids. Four is incorporate two auxiliary policies into the development plans of the blood centers to ensure continued operations of the proposed blood centers. These are: the first one is health and human resource development, including the identification and training of human resources for health intended for blood services such as but not limited to pathologies, hematologies, medical technologies, trained nurses, and others. And second is the income retention measures to guarantee financial sustainability. Number five is that the Center for Health Development shall review the proposed health workforce of the blood centers. This should be in coordination with other concerned offices or bureau based on recent directives and strategies of the Department of Health and in accordance with existing policies and guidelines of the Department of Budget and Management and the Civil Service Commission. Uh consider an approach on penalties that focuses on education, prevention, and rehabilitation. Strengthening safety protocols, providing additional training, and establishing rigorous monitoring system can be more effective in ensuring compliance and preventing violations. Respectfully submitted, signed by the Secretary of Health, Chodoro J. Hermosa, Medical Doctor. Good morning, Po.
Thank you, uh Director Anet Tan. Uh before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the uh presence of uh Honorable Romel Rico Tiangara of the Lone District of Aurora and Honorable Romel Rom- Romolo Kid Peña Junior of the uh First District of Makati. Thank you very much. Um we now recognize Doctor If Tizar Haron of the uh Philippine, Officer in Charge of the Philippine Blood Center, you are now recognized.
Uh in behalf of the PBC, I'd like to give the floor to my staff, Dr. Edri, for the our position in PBC.
So please state your name and your designation, please.
I am Edri Alcansare. I am a medical specialist too. Uh I am the Admini- Administrative Division Chief of the Philippine Blood Center.
Proceed.
Alright. So with regards to the six bills that are currently on um uh being uh discussed right now, the four, sorry, House Bill Number 3457 and House Bill Number 9452 are the closest in terms of uh the ones that align with the current strategic trust of the Philippine Blood Center as of right now. Uh right now, the Philippine Blood Center is the um according to Administrative Order 2005 dash zero 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 two, it is the National Blood Center for the Philippines, the Subnational Blood Center for Luzon, and the Regional Blood Center for Metro Manila. Uh this is also reinforced with uh Department Order uh 2023 dash zero four two three. So the Philippine Blood Center is a blood se- uh blood service facility that collects, tests, uh processes, stores, and distributes blood and blood products to various patients that need it uh ide- ideally in all of the Philippines, but in practice mostly in the national capital region and nearby adjacent provinces and regions. So we, in terms of this, it has been operating for so long, uh originally with the National Voluntary Blood Services Program as detailed by the Republic Act 7719, uh until last year when it was crea- uh when it was separated from the program and made to become its own operating unit. Uh because of this, uh because it does not have a formal legal mandate, the Philippine Blood Center itself uh only relies on the maintenance and other operating expenses budget allotted to the uh National Voluntary Blood Services Program. It has no uh it has no budget for personnel services, for capital outlay. Uh all of its equipment are either procured uh through the program or procured through the Health Facilities Enhancement Program of the DOH or are under a lease uh lease uh program with um with the with various suppliers, so on a subscription raide- uh reagent subscription basis. Uh aside and because of that, uh because it does not have budget for personnel services, we've had uh long-term employees being job order or contract of service for more than a decade, for close to two decades already. And we, of the one hundred or so personnel that the Philippine Blood Center has, only around eight of them are actual plantilla, plantilla items. So you can uh imagine how much of our um personnel, we have a a cycle of attrition, uh sudden changes in our personnel because they see better opportunities. And yet despite all of these challenges and gaps with the Philippine Blood Center, in 2018, before the pandemic, there was a demand from the Philippine Blood Center to fulfill seventy-one thousand one hundred sixty-one uh blood requests of uh different types of blood and blood products, and it was able to serve seventeen, seventy thousand one hundred forty-eight of those. So that is a ninety-eight point five percent served uh served um blood uh blood request. In 2019, a year before the pandemic, there were, there was eighty-two thousand nine requests for various blood and blood products, eighty-one thousand three hundred four forty-five of those were served. So that is So that is close to a ninety-nine, that actually exceeds a ninety-nine percent served blood products. In twenty twenty, even during the pandemic itself, there was a drop in the request for blood and blood units. There was twenty-six thousand eight hundred ninety requests for blood products. Twenty-five thousand one hundred sixty-four were served. So it was still above ninety percent. It was close to ninety-four percent served. And currently this year in twenty twenty-three, of the forty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-two blood and blood product requests, we've been able to serve forty-six thousand two hundred seventy-six requests. So that's all percent served blood requests. For twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, it was the same. It's always been above ninety-five percent in spite of all of these challenges and all of these gaps. So, in terms of why we humbly request a mandate for the PBC, it is for the personnel who have served for so long, who believe in improving the blood services, the blood needs and the blood requirements of various patients that require transfusions. We owe-
Please wind up.
Okay. We owe it to them that their efforts will be rewarded. Thank you.
So, do you support the bills and you have any objections?
Yes, we support the bills with no objections.
Thank you very much, Sir Edri Alcansare. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of the following members of the committee: Honorable Maria Angela Garcia of the Third District of Batan and Honorable Franz Castro, Deputy Minority Leader of Act teachers party list. Thank you very much. We now recognize Dr. Kristi Monina Nalupta of the Philippine Red Cross.
So, good morning, Honorable Chairman Akop and the honorable representatives of the Committee of Health. Hello. Yeah. So, good morning to all. So, may I share to you the position of the Philippine Red Cross on House Bill number three, three, four, eight, Amending Republic Act number seven, seven, one, nine, otherwise known as the National Blood Services Act of nineteen ninety-four, promoting voluntary blood donation, providing for an adequate supply of safe blood, regulating blood banks and providing penalties for the violation thereof and for other purposes. The Philippine Red Cross Blood Services was established on July seventeen, nineteen forty-eight as the first blood bank in the Philippines. PRC started a joint agreement on blood collection with the Department of Health in nineteen fifty-four. To date, the PRC is one of the tripartite agencies of the National Blood Services Program by virtue of Republic Act seven, seven, one, nine, otherwise known as the Republic Act of nineteen ninety-four. Under the network of the Philippine Red Cross are thirty-two blood centers and seventy-six blood collecting units and blood stations strategically located all over the country responsible for ensuring access to adequate, safe and quality blood supply. Pre-pandemic, PRC accounts for fifty-two percent of the country's blood collection. From the period spanning from January twenty twenty-three to present, PRC already collected four hundred fifty-three thousand seven hundred eighteen units, equivalent to almost fifty percent of the country's blood requirement. Centralization of blood testing and processing or the blood center model is practiced as PRC is consistent with the recommended system by the World Health Organization. This encourages a high volume of activities in testing and processing that promotes efficiency and competency thus ensuring quality of blood and blood products. High volume of blood banking procedure maximizes economies of scale. The blood transport system was recently introduced by Chairman Richard Gordon where PRC's motorcycles, vans carry and transport the blood supply directly to the hospital upon the request of the client or the patient. This ensures integrity of blood units through proper cold chain and the chain of custody. When the natural and man-made disasters and medical emergencies strike, PRC keeps the blood flowing in stricken areas. This was well taken to action during the super typhoon Hayan, Sambuanga siege, Marawi urban conflict and bombings in Sulu and Sultan Kaderak and large-scale medical emergencies such as the COVID-nineteen pandemic. In keeping with the mandate of the PRC in alleviating human sufferings, those patients needing blood who are financially challenged to pay the processing or the service fee can avail of the funds of the organization under the Blood Samaritan Program for Indigence. With the goal of achieving a well-organized, efficient and sustainable blood programs, the DOH has been in the forefront to improve the National Voluntary Blood Program of the country through Republic Act seven, seven, one, nine. The PRC supports the amendments to the Republic Act seven, seven, one, nine as introduced by Congressman Patrick Michael Vargas to wit: Section one, addition of definitions for authorized blood service facility and emergency situation; Section two, addition of section twelve prohibited acts, namely retesting of blood units by end-user hospitals and other health facilities on blood transfusion, transmissible disease for a fee. DOH AO two thousand and eight, zero, zero, eight, section five, eight point six states that blood units issued by authorized blood service facilities should not be retested for TTIs. This statement was also reiterated at DOH Department Circular two thousand and eighteen dash zero, three, four, eight. Some hospital blood banks performing blood transfusion are still requiring retesting of the blood unit on TTIs at the expense of the patient. Number two, refusing to accept any blood products issued by authorized blood service facilities under the Philippine National Blood Service Network. As experienced by the Philippine Red Cross, some hospitals prefer blood and blood products from specific blood service facilities and defer acceptance of blood units from the Philippine Red Cross. Number three, charging of additional or higher fees for blood units dispensed which exceed the maximum allowable blood service fees as determined by the department. The maximum allowable service fees for blood and blood products are stated in DOH AO two thousand and fifteen, zero, zero, forty-five and reiterated in DOH Department Circular two thousand and eighteen, zero, three, four, eight. Both department issuances also penalize facilities that violate that provision. Reselling of unused blood and blood products issued by authorized blood service facilities under the PNBS network. Patients often experience difficulties in acquiring blood and blood products needed for transfusion. With the PRC's mission to alleviate human sufferings, the organization supports the prohibition of reselling of unused blood and blood products. Section two, T of the Republic Act seven, seven, one, nine states that the provision of blood for transfusion is a medical service and not a sale of a commodity. Receiving payment in exchange for donating blood. Pursuant to section three F of Republic Act seven, seven, one, nine, a voluntary blood donor is defined as one who donates blood on one's own volition or initiative and without monetary compensation. Thus, paid donation is not allowed. And facilities that violate shall be penalized according to DOH AO thirty-six, series of nineteen ninety-four, chapter seven and the Department Circular twenty twenty, zero, three, one, two. Reiteration of the National Blood Services Program issuance concerning no paid donation for conventional donation, Afreza's donation and convalescent plasma donation. Requiring replacement blood donations by any blood service facility to avoid compromising blood safety. The National Voluntary Blood Services is geared towards one hundred percent voluntary blood donation and as stipulated in the Department of Health Circular two thousand and eight, twenty eighteen, three, two, four, the Philippine Red Cross also advocates voluntary blood donation. No other fees related to blood services shall be collected from the patient or the relatives of the patient. DOH AO twenty fifteen, zero, zero, forty-five, six, B was reiterated through DOH DC twenty eighteen, zero, three, forty-eight clearly states that blood processing fee covers all the expenses incurred in processing, testing and administrative fees related to the preparation of the blood and blood products with the exemption of the additional fees related to transfusion and specialized tests such as nucleic acid amplification tests and antibody screening for additional blood safety. Section three addition-
Dr. Nalupta, how many more minutes?
This will be, I have two more, sir, perhaps two minutes, sir. So, as part of the Blood Services Network, PRC Blood Service Facilities ensures that all blood units are tested and negative from blood contaminations and are properly labeled before issuance. This as part of the quality assurance of the Philippine Red Cross and in compliance with the regulatory requirements for operating a blood service facility is a must for all facilities. So, addition on section fifteen, accessibility relative to accessibility, Chairman Richard Gordon has recently introduced the blood transport system that utilizes PRC's motorcycles and vans to carry out and transport the blood supply directly to the hospital upon the request of the client. So with this, I humbly submit this position paper of the Philippine Red Cross signed by Dr. Gwendolyn Pang. This is regarding the amendment to the Republic Act seven, seven, one, nine by Representative Vargas. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nalupta. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of House Member Honorable Jane Castro of the Second District of Capis. Thank you very much. Next is Dr. Edmundo Lopez, President of the Philippine Hospital Association. You are now recognized.
Morning. Thank you, Congressman Gato. First of all, the PHA is very grateful for being invited in this committee hearing and we'd just like to inform the body that the Philippine Hospital Association is fully supportive of these house bills being presented here. However, we just like to make some recommendations, particularly on House Bill three, three, four, eight regarding the prohibition of retesting for blood transfusion, transmissible blood diseases, whereby we want an additional statement in that provision wherein that diseases transmitted resulting from the non-retesting of the blood and blood product shall not be the liability of the end-user hospital or end-user institution. So we want that being inserted in that provision. Now on section fourteen, on the penalties, it was stated upon complaint of any person and after due notice and hearing, any government or private hospital, blood bank, blood center found in violation of the prohibited act shall have its license suspended. So here we want it modified to include or being restated as penalties upon complaint of any person and after due notice and hearing, any government or private hospital, blood bank, blood center found in violation shall have its license to operate a blood bank center or blood service facility only being suspended. It's not suspension of the whole hospital. So, those are the changes that we want inserted in the provisions so that the other services of the hospitals, yeah, the other services will not be suspended. It's only the blood center of that facility which will be suspended for operations. I think that would be all, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lopez. We now recognize from the Department of Budget and Management, Mr. Reynaldo Moreno.
Mabuhay pot magandang umaga po, Mr. Chair and the honorable members of this committee. At sa mga kapwa po kawaninang pamahalaan kagaya ko, ako po si Rey Moreno mula sa Department of Budget and Management. Generally, we recognize and appreciate for the intention of the bills and we interpose no objection and depart to the appropriate agencies with functional jurisdiction on the matter. However, may we share our initial findings and comments on the specific bills? For House Bill three, three, four, eight and eight, eight, two, zero, we found no vegetarian implication to the national government. As to HB four, zero, zero, five, although we have concern on the provision on income retention, we depart to the GCG considering po na the proposal is a GOC. As to House Bill seven, eight, seven, two and three, four, five, seven, generally we depart to the DOH but we have concern on the provisions on the trust fund and appropriation. And for the local hospitals po, ganun din naman po. May we know po that the economic team, the economic managers already submitted a letter to the leadership of both Houses of Senate and Congress last August thirty with the subject improving collaboration between the executive and legislative branches on economic and fiscal bills in the nineteen Congress. There are items that were in the said letter po specifically on the issue on the stand of the economic team on the income retention and the trust fund. Batay po sa liham po ng economic managers, yung proposal po for income retention and trust fund ay dinidiscourage po natin dahil po sa polisiya po natin ang one fund. We note po na for allowing for the income retention will might reduce transparency po in the use of funds by agencies at is not open to scrutiny by Congress, unlike when funds pass through the regular vegetarian review and authorization. As to the trust fund po, gaya ng nabanggit ko nga po na yung ay polisiya po ng pambansang pamahalaan on the one fund policy. Yung creation po ng fund ay ng trust fund ay dinidiscourage po as it reduces the revenue pool of the national government. Instead po of creating special funds, it would be most prudent to provide the funding requirements for the implementation of the bill through the annual GA po. So initially po yun yung aming pong comment on the income retention and trust fund. As to the creation of GOC po, may we note po of the following considerations pursuant po to Article sixteen, section sixteen, Article twelve of the Constitution, na kailangan po iconsider yung cost-benefit analysis po upon the creation, dun sa mga proposed creation ng GOC and careful determination on whether the proposed new government entity can meet the desired objectives and actual produce better outcomes. Para din po na iwasan din po na yung mga GOC po na nililiha ay nakikin dependen po sa national government. As to the local hospitals po, may we note po of the existing policies po and criteria per DOH Administrative Order number two thousand six dash zero, zero, four, dash C, updated March twenty to twenty thirteen. Kung saan ka, saan po roon yung criteria po, in example po yung bed to population ratio, level time, accessibility, et cetera, et cetera, bago po makapag-issue ng certificate of need dun sa proponent po. Dun naman po sa pagtatayo po ng hospital with the, siyempre po may corresponding po ng mga personal need. May we note po na it should be consistent with the policies and guidelines specifically po doon sa existing organizational staffing standards for hospitals under DBM DOH Joint Circular number twenty thirteen, dash one, Joint Circular number three, series of twenty twenty-two and other pertinent provision for relevant loss. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Last of our resource speakers this morning is Mr. Kenneth Punzalan of the Philippine Blood Coordinating Council. You are now recognized, Mr. Punzalan. Mr. Kenneth Punzalan of the Philippine Blood Coordinating Council. You are now recognized, Mr. Punzalan.
Hello and good morning. My name is Kenneth Punzalan. I am the current secretary for the Philippine Blood Coordinating Council and also a medical technologist by profession working at the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine. So this would be the position paper of the Philippine Blood Coordinating Council. So, a study led by Doctor Paran in nineteen ninety four paved the way for the
Make it brief, uh, Mr. Punzalan.
This paved way for the enactment of RA seven seven one nine or the National Blood Services Act of nineteen ninety four. And a national policy was instituted then that set the standards for the Philippine Blood Services and promoted voluntary blood donation and led to the closure and ban on all commercial blood banks. To cite the study of Doctor Lam in twenty twelve, the enactment and implementation of a national program and policy on blood transfusion has led to the improved safety as seen in the reduction of the residual risk from five point two in nineteen ninety four to point four percent in twenty eleven. So policy implementation and provision of support to these blood service facilities may lead to further improvement in our blood safety. Now, the National Council of Blood Services was created as a governing body of the Philippine National Blood Services, which are composed mainly of and by blood service facilities of the Department of Health, the Philippine National Red Cross, and the local government units. All over the Philippines, the blood centers and all of these blood service facilities within their catchment areas are organized into what we call the Blood Services Network. Each are designed to adapt to the unique situation of their localities, but nevertheless still adhering to the standards that have been set by the DOH. Now, given that the National Voluntary Blood Services Program main goal of blood safety and advocacy towards quality care and patient safety, additional policies and guidelines need to be issued. The same aims to strengthen the operations of our blood service facilities at the national and local levels with the end in view of efficiency and timely availability of quality and safe blood supply. So the Blood Services Network distributed across the, the country is similar to our universal healthcare and was established way ahead of the existing laboratory services network that we have right now. So these are composed of our blood centers, which are non-hospital based, our hospital, blood banks, the blood collecting units, and our blood stations. So the establishment of the Philippine Blood Center and the proposed amendments in the uh, RA seven seven one nine may raise concern that need careful consideration. While we acknowledge the importance of ensuring a safe and adequate blood supply in the Philippines, we believe that these measures may not be the most effective way to address the current issues related to the blood supply and safety. But instead, we propose a focus on improving the existing blood donation and management systems, reinforcing good manufacturing practices for our blood products, and addressing the root causes of our blood shortages. So instead, again of making amendments, we propose a focus again on improving the existing blood donation and management system, reinforcing GMP or the good manufacturing practices for our blood products. And through this, we have a centralized GMP compliant approach through the recognition of what we call the Blood Center Model, which will ensure the safe, high quality and accessibility of the blood supply that the Filipino people deserve. There is a need for full support of a hundred percent operationalization of all blood centers in the country that are already existing to implement the standards and the service capabilities as already stated in the current implementing rules and regulations and the subsequent DOH issuances. So these blood centers, they lack plenty of positions, they lack vehicles for mobile blood donations and direct distribution of these blood products to the end user facilities. But fortunately, there is already an unallowed income retention for our blood centers as stated in the General Appropriations Act to add to their financial sustainability. But again, there is a need for capital investment for operationalization. So by adopting this approach, the Philippines can meet the WHO standards for essential medicines since these blood products are considered as essential medicines and it will fill its commitment to the improvement of our public health aspect. So on behalf of the blood service facilities that are actually working on the ground, the professional societies and other stakeholders that were not consulted with all of these House bills, we respectfully recommend that they be invited or involved with the succeeding hearings. That's all, your honor.
Thank you very much, um. Uh, recognize, Congressman Honorable Palma for uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, morning. Uh, first of all, I just want to request all the resource persons to please submit your position papers. Uh, we need your inputs also in the technical working group that we will come up later. Uh, I'll, I'll go straight to the point. Uh, DOHs, I was afraid to understand through the, of Doctor Tan that uh, there are only two blood center per, in, in, in the entire Philippines region. Sebu and the both. What happened to the other? What other, what? Please use the microphone, please.
Good morning po, Honorable Palma. Bale, the two sub-national, sir, sub-national blood centers, which means they cater other uh, regions that are nearby.
Yeah, why, why is it uh, uh, in other regions we don't have a blood center? As far as DOH is concerned? Is it, we lack manpower, we lack the necessary resources or what?
I'm sorry. Uh, Honorable, uh, Congressman, actually, uh, the common ground why that these blood centers were just established, actually, these are new new sub-national blood centers po. They are funded under the HPE po. It's about the funding for establishment of the blood centers po.
Yeah, because we, I, I, I myself is a uh, very much interested that if we can put up a blood center in all the regions. Uh, this is very, very necessary in terms of calamity, disaster, and so on and so forth. Uh, with all due respect to the Red Cross, major sister private entity naman. So, wh- while in the DOHs, uh, it's more on a public funds. So I think uh, we can strengthen by putting up other blood bank center in all the regions. Would that be possible uh, through the HPE funding?
Actually, that is included in the position paper of the Secretary of Health po, Honorable Congressman.
So that uh, by twenty twenty five, uh, can we expect uh, uh, using the HPE uh, funds for the establishment of this uh, blood bank center?
Uh, we will, we will send the message to our secretary about this secret, uh, Honorable Congressman. However, in his in the, in this position paper, he says that, the DOH says that through the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan aims to develop at least one DOH blood centers in every region and is estimated to cost a total of three point fifty three four billion this year, Honorable Congressman.
Uh, remember that the HPE, uh, ang laki ng budget ninyo. Tapos, with all due respect naman, uh, I think uh, HPE, you're just focusing on infrastructure, so why don't we focus here also establishing the blood bank center for all the regions? So that uh, uh, if our people uh, needs uh, blood, uh, they can easily access to the blood center, even if it's not in the regional center. Uh, basta it's proper handling lang, I think that's still okay. Can we expect that uh, in the next uh, twenty twenty five budget, Mr. Chair, if uh, they can give priority to this?
It is noted po, Honorable Congressman.
Okay, good. Uh, another thing, uh, uh, Red Cross is a private entity. Am I correct, Doc?
Um, we are a, a non-government humanitarian organization.
Kaya nga, it's a private, right?
We don't use sir, private, but non, perhaps, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Ano ba naman?
Sorry, sir. I'm not used to u- using private. Okay, thanks.
So that uh, we need also the partner, partnership of the Red Cross and we are very thankful for that. But uh, I think, uh, I would uh, I would be very honest if the blood banks, uh, the one, the, sir, uh, next to you, your recommendation, we will just strengthen your recommendation to strengthen the blood, uh, ano yon?
The existing.
Blood center, the council or the blood center for that matter. And so that uh, instead of focusing on the bill, why don't we strengthen the mandate? Can, can you please also submit your position paper, sir?
Yes, I will po.
Okay, so that uh, i- i- in the next T W G, we can uh, also your recommendations to invite all other resource persons uh, during the technical working group, Mr. Chair. So, I think that's uh, what we need now. In the meantime, uh, uh, twenty twenty four budget is already in the hands of the Senate. But if you can make some representation during the BI-CAM, uh, let's say putting up another three health, uh, blood center in, in probably three regions, that would be, how much is, do we, do we need to have, ano? Just to start up. Pe- per region lang muna. That's three point three billion? Uh, ilan ko lang? Thirteen?
Thirty? Thirteen po, Honorable.
So three point three over thirteen? That's what, para just to start with the, jumpstart the, the uh, to jumpstart the blood center. Uh, lastly, what is the coordination between the Red Cross and as far as the DOH or the blood center is? And ano yung coordination na, uh, for example, ma'am, if I need blood, I'm not a donor of the Philippine Red Cross. Do I have to pay sa inyo just to purchase the blood or what?
Uh, ye- yes, sir. Um, um, we have, um, we charge blood processing fee for, uh, for pay patients. That's allowable by the law.
How, how much, ma'am?
Um, before sir, for the whole blood, it's uh, one thousand eight hundred. For the red cells, it's one thousand five hundred, and for the rest of the components, it's one thousand. That is uh, in accordance with uh, DOH and afferes is for fifteen thousand. So regardless uh, of uh, where you donated, uh, if ever you need blood from the Red Cross, um, we supply them, we release blood, we distribute. Now, if you are an indigent, we have uh, the Blood Samaritan Program to cover the blood processing fee uh, of uh, these indigent patients, ma'am.
Uh, for example, if you're a donor, uh, in other region, okay, let's say Sambuanga for that matter. Tapos it happened, uh, you need blood here in Manila, you just present the card, uh, are you going to help and facilitate the release of the blood also?
Uh, the blood donor's card of the Philippine Red Cross is just a, a card, a record of donation. For as long as uh, we have or you present to us the blood request coming from different provinces or cities or municipalities, we will honor, sir. We, we are mandated to provide blood po. Regardless kung saan po kayo nagdonate ng tukod.
Okay, I'll address this to the Philippine Ha- uh, Hospital Association. Uh, but, but before that, uh, I do have some uh, experience na nangyari na ano, uh, he was confined in the Philippine Kidney Center. Tapos, uh, that guy is from my, my district, no, from my tapos he was asked to produce or to prepare blood. But blood donor siya, binigay sa Philippine Kidney Center. But the Philippine Kidney Center won't accept that card. Kasi sabi niya, sabi nila, you need to go to the Red Cross and get by yourself. Pero, by, by going there, there's a problem in handing the blood and so on and so forth. That's, that's the dilemma. So why don't we have some coordination? Doctor Philippine Hospital Association, is that also your, your system or your, your policy?
Uh, your honor, uh, the Philippine Hospital Association, uh, usually follow the policy of the, the Department of Health and the, the network.
Uh, okay, sir.
Uh, every hospital have their own policies on, on this matter. Usually, uh, it's a blood bank to blood bank coordination among facilities.
For example, I'm a card holder, okay? Uh, I need blood, but ang blood ano ko, from Sambuanga. So if present ko sa inyo, because I need blood, uh, you're, 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 uh, one of the hospital rejected it because sabi nila you have to go by yourself to the Red Cross and process yourself. So dapat sana, coordination na lang, paperwork na lang yung.
Usually, blood banks uh, coordinate uh, among uh, themselves in the, in the network. So if a hospital does not have a, a, a blood of a particular uh, type, they usually coordinate with, with the, with the other blood facility within their network in that geographical area.
That's the problem, sir eh. Uh, otherwise, you have to pay. Indigent na nga yung pasyente, uh, for example, in the Philippine Kidney Center, indigent na nga.
In, in.
Kahanap ka pa ng blood donor, diba?
In government facilities, if uh, the patient is indigent, they usually don't charge.
Pero gano'n eh. Pinapahanap, papuntahin ng tao sa Philippine Red Cross, eh, taga provinsya yon. Takot nga mag, uh, mag-cross ng street kasi ang daming ano, diba? Tapos papuntahin mo. Dapat sana, there should be a proper coordination between the hospital, regardless of private or, or public with the Philippine Red Cross, and I think the Philippine Blood Center and the council should address this later on. And that's the best uh, suggestion that I can also. Would that be possible also? Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, in the T W G, I think we can we can uh, strengthen and fine-tuning everything, the ano. So for that, uh, Doctor, can we make a representation? Kasi di pa tapos yung Senate, baka pwede sa uh, pwede sa BI-CAM, maski dalawang C H D, uh, Center for Health, C H D na mas, dalawang C H D lang. Okay, I know you're from my, my region also.
Thanks for that, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, with the permission of the chair, I'll be proceeding to the other reorganization. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Palma. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge, um, uh, Honorable Ron Salo, Chairman of the Committee on OFW and also one of the proponent of the bills of uh, Kabayan Partilis, and Honorable and Chairman of the House Committee on Ways and Means, Honorable Joe Isarte Salceda. Thank you very much. Lumabas, anyway. We now we now call on, uh, we now recognize, uh, Honorable, uh, Ako.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, lest I be misunderstood, I am for the uh, uh, intention of all the different bills we have uh, read today. But uh, please allow me to ask uh, some clarificatory questions. Or because I have always uh, looked insofar as this issue are concerned on three things. The funding, the implementation, and the policy of uh, our president, uh, President Bongbong Marcos. First, uh, may I ask DOH, what is the source of funding insofar as Republic Act seven seven one nine is concerned?
Director Tan?
Uh, Republic Act seven seven one nine? Uh, before, prior to the Uh, before, prior to the, uh, as was stated earlier, sir, the P B C was then under the National Voluntary Blood Program of the Department of Health. But as of last year ba, uh, can I ask Doctor Gerard to kindly answer that, sir? Doc?
Uh, good.
Director Bellimak?
Good morning, po, Mr. Chair, uh, Gerard Bellimak fro- from the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau. We have a line item for the National, uh, Voluntary Blood Services Program po, and this is being, um, administered by the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau, sir.
You're, you're telling us, Mr. Chair, may I proceed?
Please proceed, the Honorable.
You're telling us that you have a budgetary allocation from government for this? Line item kasi ang binanggit mo iho eh.
Mr. Chair, we download funds to the blood centers.
Yeah, but what is the source of these funds that you are downloading, and what is the authority of that?
Director Tan?
Uh, yeah, may I answer po? It is really under the Voluntary Blood Services Program.
Are you trying to tell this committee, madam, that there are, there is no, uh, budgetary allocation from the national government? Yun gusto kong malaman eh.
The budgetary requirements wa- is being passed under sa, 'yung sabi niya sa Disease Control Program, under the National Voluntary Blood Program. It is under the.
So there's a fact for the National Voluntary Blood Program?
Yes.
Now, the source of that fund?
Is under the Department of Health, yes po, under sa Disease Control.
Yun 'yung from the fund of the, uh, allocated to the department.
Exactly, po, Honorable Congressman.
Yun po 'yung gusto kong malaman. Uh, so, uh, insofar as national government is concerned, ang source po ninyo ay, uh, dun po sa budgetary allocation to the D O H, tama? Ano pong line item dun sa budget ng D O H, kinukuha itong pondong ito?
Under sa N B B S P po talaga, under sa, this is, uh, D P C B, Disease Prevention and Control Bureau, D P C B.
Uh, but for your infrac- uh, infrastructure, uh, portion of your, uh, of this issue, it's from your expert?
Yes po, Honorable Congressman.
Now, may I ask, uh, would this not be enough to, uh, support the creation of, uh, blood centers in the different regions of this country?
Uh, based on the budget that are being, uh, approved on the, by the Sen- uh, by the committee, by the Congress and Senate po, it is already all planned po as to what projects are intended for the amount provided po, and the line list we will be submitting to the Technical Working Group, because as of now, we do not have po the list, Honorable Congressman.
Ang tanong ko po eh, Mr. Chair, kung 'yung allocation ngayon, present allocation, would it not be enough to create or establish, uh, blood centers in the different regions of this country? Kasi narinig ko kanina, dadalawa lang 'yung sub-national na kuwan ninyo eh.
Uh, Honorable Congressman, I would like to apologize po, as of now, I do not have the exact amount.
Okay.
Or of, how much is the budget of the HP po for the in- infra, especially for the blood centers? But for the position that was submitted po, there is allocation.
Malaki 'yung inyong pondo sa expert, actually. Eh, kasi nag-stable si nakanyo ng super health centers eh. But you are not, uh, thinking about the creation of blood centers in the different regions of this country? Di ba? Yes. Uh, do you receive funds from P C S O and PAGCOR?
Department of Health, sir? Uh, P B S.
The Philippine Blood Center does not receive funds from PAGCOR or P C, P, no, P C S O, uh, all of our, all of our, uh, funding really comes from the National Voluntary Blood Services Program, and even the, uh, retained income from, from, uh, the, the blood service fees themselves, we are not able to access because, again, we do not have a legal mandate.
Okay. Now, do you receive reimbursement from Philippine Health Insurance Corporation directly or through the hospitals?
Uh, again, uh, we do not res- uh, even if the, if these are, uh, paid through, ano, the Philippine Health Insurance, uh, Corporation, we do not have access to that, uh, reimbursement.
And, uh, yung blood service fees from government and private hospitals for units of blood provided and for services rendered?
The retained income from those blood services, uh, blood service fees, uh, paid by private hospitals and other, um, health facilities, we are not able to access as retained income, we, since we do not have a legal mandate.
Thank you. Now, who heads the Office of the National Council for Blood Services?
As per Administrative Order two thousand five dash zero 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 two, the Chairman of the National Council for Blood Services is the Secretary of Health.
Ano po 'yung sinabi nyong Administrative Order?
A O two thousand five dash zero 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 two.
Uh-uh. And if you read that Administrative Order, regarding the funding provisions of that Administrative Order, the National Council for Blood Services shall be supported by funds from, number one, main source, budgetary allocation from the national government, one point one, one point two, national government financing agencies like the Philippine Charity Shifteks Office, Philippine Amusement and Gaming Corporation, one point one, one point three, reimbursement from Philippine Health Insurance Corporation or Field Health directly or through the hospitals. The next paragraph iho is one point one, point four, blood service fees from government and private hospitals for units of blood provided and for services rendered. One point two, collaborative support from national donor agencies and foundations, international development and donor organizations, contributions from local government units, and a trust fund shall be established for the National Voluntary Blood Services. Iho, this is your own Administrative Order which you have cited?
Yes.
Tapos ngayon sinasabi mo sa akin na isa lang ang source ng pondo ng inyong, uh, council, which is the budgetary allocation from the national government, which is which now?
Um, we have been repeatedly reminded that any retained income that the Philippine Blood Center generates cannot be utilized by the Philippine Blood Center because it does not have a legal mandate by the D O H Legal Service.
That is not my question, doctor.
Okay.
Di ba?
Hmm.
Eh, bakit inilagay ng inyong departamento ng source of funds ito kung walang nakukuha rito? What is the logic behind placing these sources of funds insofar your, as your Administrative Order is concerned? Matanong ko nga po.
Director Tan?
Uh, Honorable Congressman, this is noted po, we will, we will be looking into it po.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I, I'm just bringing this out dahil, uh, uh, since we have numerous bills pertaining to this, uh, subject matter, I know for a fact that this will be subjected to a technical working group. I'm just bringing out the issues na inaakala ko na magkakaroon ng problema. Yun po 'yung akin. Second, implementation. Uh, if I listen to the position written by the Secretary of, uh, the Department of Health, it is, there is somewhat, uh, a difference between the position of the blood, uh, Philippine Blood.
Coordinating.
Coordinating Council. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, yung Tagawa P B C C po, your position is that, if I heard you right, yung inyong mga, yung mga bills na ito would not answer or would not be the appropriate remedy dun po sa mga existing problema ngayon?
Um, uh, yes, po, Honorable.
Yun po 'yung statement ninyo kanina eh, which, saan? Pero 'yung position ng D O H, gusto nila ito. Correct? Now, the P B C C is under the Secretary of Health. Am I correct?
It's a non-government organization, po, it's private.
I beg your pardon?
It's a private.
It's a private organization? Oh. Uh, I thought it was under the D O H. Kasi I'm surprised kung under D O H yon, eh di bakit magkaiba ang position ninyo? Di po ba? Kasi, uh, doon po sa nagkakataluyo sa implementation na even if we enact laws insofar as this house is concerned, kung minsan, nandun sa implementation ang pagkakamali eh. Almost always, every, every issue na iniimbestigan dito sa house, I have always asked that question, are there not enough laws governing the issue at hand? Yung mga stakeholders, ang sabi nila, there are enough laws. Where lies the problem? Ang susunod kong tanong, ang susu- ang sagot nila sa akin, nandun sa pagpapatupad. Nandun sa I R R dahil dinadagdagan 'yung I R R, which are known as Ultravirus Acts of those, uh, agencies coming up with the I R R. Ganun po ang nangyari eh. That is why ang issue ko rito, funding at saka implementation. While I agree with you, in some ways, na dapat siguro ayusin natin 'yung implementation, just like the issue presented by the Honorable Palma. Di ba? Makukuha lang naman yun na masosolve 'yung problema na present ni Honorable Palma, kung yung, uh, protocol natin sa coordination, siguro ma-improve. Magkaroon ng protocol o sistema. The next issue, Mr. Chair, is the, the, the policy of, uh, our president. Uh, we create G O C Cs. May I ask, Kowa, would this be, uh, in consonance with the streamlining policy of this administration?
D B M.
Uh, D B M pala, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moreno?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair. Uh, as to the, uh, query of, uh, Kong Akop, uh, the, the stand po of, uh, economic theme as, uh, provided po through a letter to the House Leadership is, uh, really, uh, to be careful on the, uh, creating the G O C C. So hindi naman po, uh, simasabi po dun sa, uh, letter to the House Leadership na huwag tayong mag-create. Uh, iconsider lang po 'yung mga, mga considerations po, na alin sunod po sa existing, uh, uh, guidelines or policies ng, uh, uh, pamahalaan mula po sa ating konstitusyon sa A O fifteen, A O number fifty-nine and P D twenty-twenty-nine, na 'yung creation ay dapat ay talagang makikinabang po 'yung ano, at magiging, uh, uh, I mean, uh, magiging, uh, stable po 'yung corporation, at hindi magiging dependent sa national government. Yun po 'yung pangunahing concern po ng, uh, ng economic theme ng, na aming kagawaran dahil po, uh, kung, kung naghi-create ng G O C C at, uh, magiging dependent po or to, uh, its existence sa subsidy ng, uh, national government. Although with, with, although there are other G O C C na meron 'yung mga ganun, no? Uh, dini-discourage lamang po pero hindi po, uh, pinipigilan. Maggus po ay nagigil kami palagi po sa wisdom po na ang atin po mga mamabatas, kasi mas nakikita rin po ninyo 'yung kabuuhan. Kabuuhan po ng kalagayan ng bansa, given na kayo po ay nagbagalin po sa ground at meron po kayong constituency. So, that's all, Mr. Chair.
May I proceed, Mr. Chair?
Please proceed, the Honorable Akop.
Uh, how many G O C Cs are there currently? If you do not know?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, paumanin po, uh, wala po kong datos, uh, yun po, uh, G C G po ang in-charge po sa numero po.
Thank you, because I would like to tell you that if you look, uh, at the amount na subsidy binibigay ng national government, how much would it be sa mga G O C Cs that are not sustainable?
Uh, again, uh, Mr. Chair, wala po kong datos ngayon pero, uh, iko- ikoordinate po namin sa proper agency po.
No, it's your agency who should know, kasi.
Yes, po.
Nakaallocate ng subsidy eh.
Uh, i- i- yes po, uh, uh, paumanin po, uh, as of this moment, uh, wala po kong hawak na datos.
And I will tell you, sir, that it's a big sum of money.
I- i- yes po.
To support the G O C Cs created na hindi po sustainable, o konti lang po 'yung G O C Cs na sustainable. Yun po ang katotohanan, and if we, if we stop creating G O C Cs na which would rely on the subsidy provided by national government, mas malaki siguro 'yung mas save natin. What do you think?
Uh, I will agree with that, uh, Mr. Chair. However, po, uh, sir, uh, nasaman ng dato po kasi ng G C G na magrekomenda kung alin sa mga, uh, G O C C ang dapat na adolis are still functioning. Nasa kanila pong mandato kaya po, um, malagap po na sila mismo ay, uh, pinag-aaralan na mabuti kung alin talaga 'yung mga dapat na manatili na hindi maging na-burden po sa ating pamahalaan at nagagawa 'yung kanyang mandato, alin sunod sa, sa batas na maglikha po sa kanila?
In other words, uh, you are stating to this committee that the Department of Budget and Management does not have a say insofar as how many G O C Cs shall be created? Kasi that is how I understand your statement. When in fact, the policy of the president is we should streamline the bureaucracy. How do you reconcile that now, uh, sir? Doon sa policy ng ating presidente?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, yung stand po ng economic theme, kung saan po, uh, isa po 'yung D B M. Uh, gaya po ng nabasa ko kanina, no? Uh, in terms po pa sa, sa stand po na yon na dini-discarages lamang po, no? Hindi po pinipigilan po 'yung creation. Uh, dito po, mas malaki po 'yung papel po ng, uh, National Economic and Development Authority, kasi mas tibid na nila 'yung mga, uh, implications nito sa ating, uh, Philippine Development Plan, sa ano mang mga comprehensive na plano ng pamahalaan. No, sa, sa D B M po, uh, sa side po ng D B M, uh, kinalulungkot ko po na ang malaking bahagi, ang, ang, ang G C G po ang mas merong malaking bahagi po. Taubay po sa mga desisyon po para po sa, uh, creation ng G O C C. Uh, although we look into, uh, the implications on the, uh, national budget of these creations, uh, we are, uh, always, uh, yield and prepare po sa recommendation mo ni G C G as a, as a counterpart po na, uh, agency po ng pamahalaan.
Uh, ang, ang akin lang po is that, uh, sinabi nyo po kanina, ang primordial consideration po sa pag-recreate, pag-aapprove nyo dun, o pagsasangayon ninyo sa creation ng G O C Cs, ang primordial consideration ay 'yung sustainability. Now, if you make a study insofar as the different bills are concerned, uh, do you think there will be, uh, it can be sustained? What's your initial, uh, assessment or analysis?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, kinalulungkot po wala po ko sa position para po ano, although, uh, initially po, uh, dahil na nabanggit ko kanina, no? We are, uh, supportive po on this, uh, proposed measures given that it will benefit probably our constituency dahil po, gaya po na nabanggit po kanina ni Kong Palma, talaga po mga merong, uh, malaking pangangailangan po ang ating norma yan. Uh, talaga naman pong problema yung, 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 yung mga, sa issue po ng mga dugo po na pangangailangan po ng ating mga pasyente. Kasi ako lang sa side ko rin po, uh, na, na, naranasan ko rin po 'yung hirap ng, ng paghingi po ng dugo, no?
Yeah, uh, I would just like to emphasize that as far as this representation is concerned, uh, the creation of these, uh, bodies should be, the primordial consideration should be the need to come up with this. Is it necessary? Kasi we do not have enough funds, this country does not, you know, have enough funds to fund all the requirements, and therefore, we must establish priorities. And therefore, we must establish priorities. Di po ba?
Ag- agree, Mr. Chair.
Yes. But what would be the, the main criteria para pag, sa pag-iestablish ng mga ito? It should be the need, not the desire? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Akop. Uh, we now recognize uh, Honorable Franz Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, magandang, magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. Um, malat na ako. Um, kanina, Mr. Chair, one of our source persons said that blood is a, is an essential medicine. So do you agree? H- DOH? Tama ba? Do you consider blood as an essential medicine? Okay, so eto 'yung uh, kung, kung in terms of policy, um, Mr. Chair. So, um, naka, kumbaga, naka-budget na'to among, among doon sa mga essential medicines. Tama po ba? DOH? O hindi pa? Director Tan, uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Honorable Congresswoman, bale, it is also included already since it is part of all the, the needed uh, ano.
Sige. Um, doon po sa pagrara- uh, ibig sabihin, eto, itong, itong mga ba- mga, mga bills na ito, aims to create, no, yung, um, to create a body, so halimbawa, 'yung Philippine Blood Center, para magkaroon talaga ng budget na sarili, although it is attached under the DOH, tama po ba? And, Mr. Chair, kapag nagkaroon po ng mandate na mabuo sila, whether it is attach, is just attach agency lang ng DOH or 'yung, or, or uh, GOC, so mahalaga na um, makapagbigay tayo talaga ng mga pangangailangan na blood, no? Whether it is under attached agencies or, or GOC. Um, so ano po 'yung pangangailangan, halimbawa, sa Philippine Blood Center, in terms of uh, doon sa pagki-create nitong, sinasabi natin na ma-create itong body na ito? So, uh, as of now po ba, ilan po ba 'yung mga personnel, 'yung budget, 'yung structure, at saka 'yung services, et cetera? So, meron ba kayong sinadmit, Mr. Chair, na pangangailangan ng pagki-create nito at 'yung, 'yung present situation kasi, na dapat na isolve natin dito sa mga bills na'to, with these bills? Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, at sa Blood Center, Philippine Blood Center?
Okay. So, we have submitted to the appropriate bureau sa uh, Department of Health, yung with regards to the personnel uh, requirements, the uh, human resources for health requirements of uh, the Blood Center, uh, especially the Philippine Blood Center, uh, made proposals for those personnel. Um, in, from a standing, uh, from what we have right now, we have uh, one hundred eight or so the personnel. Only eight of those are actual plantilia people, the rest are either contractual or job orders. Uh, the equipment that we have, uh, basically, they are on a subscription, uh, subscription basis, reagent subscription basis. Uh, there are a few uh, equipment that we have that the Philippine Blood Center itself uh, owns. Uh, we do not have our own vehicles, we use the motor vehicle pool of the Department of Health. Um, and we are under a use of agreement with the Long Center of the Philippines for our own physical plant. And uh, again, we have no capability of procuring our own equipment. Uh, we are dependent on the budget of the National Voluntary Blood Services Program in terms of procuring uh, procuring reagents, materials such as blood bags and uh, supplies that we need uh, to collect, test, process, and store blood. And uh, one of the um, one of the current challenges we have is that because of this, uh, sometimes we run out of the reagents and we have to coordinate with other blood service facilities, other DOH blood service facilities to, to borrow 'yung reagents and supplies nila.
So, um, Mr. Chair, uh, gusto natin mag-submit, no? The, uh, we'd like to ask the Bla- Philippine Blood Center, uh, written um, report. O, ang situation, ano, ano. Kasi maganda 'yung makita natin, so that ma-justify natin yung um, justi- ma- ma- justify natin, Mr. Chair, 'yung institutionalization, kumbaga, nitong ano, ano, nitong Philippine Blood Center. So I agree naman na dapat bigyan din sila ng, ng ano, ano. Considering 'yung plantilia position, one hundred eight personnel, eight lang 'yung talagang may plantilia position. So ito bang one hundred na ito talagang, I mean, needed? Dito sa, ano na'ton, dito sa uh, institution na ito? Considering na, so siyempre, gusto rin natin ma- mapalawak, diba, ang region, kasi dalawa lang 'yung sinasabi niyong centers natin at mapalawak. So itong one hundred ba, Mr. Chair? Enough doon sa sinasabi nating requirement na maging uh, sufficient ito? Or what? O ilan, ilan, ilan 'yung requirements na sinasabi nyo talaga?
Our proposal is a minimum of one hundred sixty-six personnel. Uh, right now, we are undergoing a uh, crisis, uh, a small crisis of uh, resignations from our medical technologist staff, to the point that we are now uh, changing the scheduling of the shifts for our medical technologists. Because um, because uh, a lot of them have been long time uh, job orders and with the experience that they have accrued in the, in the blood services, they are easily hired by other blood service facilities who offer them better opportunities uh, for the, the experiences that they gained in the Philippine Blood Center.
So yun ang nagiging problema natin, Mr. Chair, no? Uh, itong mga skilled, highly skilled na ating mga um, mga personnel, dito sa, halimbawa sa DOH, ay ma- mawawala kung hindi mapu- mapaprovide yung uh, security of tenure doon sa kanilang ano, no, doon sa kanilang trabaho. So mahalaga, whether it is GOC, kung hindi man ito maging GOC, maging full pledge na institution na katulad ng mga ibang mga agents, uh, attached agencies sa DOH, kasi alam natin na ang kahalagahan, uh, Mr. Chair, na meron tayong ganito, no? At, at, pero nakikita ko naman, despite, despite doon sa rip- sa sinasabing kakulangan, nakita ko uh, sa Philippine Blood Center, sa DOH, you can provide naman, diba, sabi nyo, ninety percent, ninety-four percent of the needed blood by our patients, by our, by our kababayan, ay napaprovide naman.
For the, in the past five years, the lowest that we have not been able to serve is ninety-four percent service rate. So all of the blood requests, ninety-four percent or above are served.
Yes. So tingin ko, Mr. Chair, uh, with that performance, parang tingin ko, they deserve na magkaroon ng ano, no? At ma- maaprubahan ito mga bills na'to that concerns the ano, no, the request ng ating mga bla- uh, na ating blood, uh, Philippine Blood uh, Center. So yun lang po, uh, Mr. Chair, 'yung gusto na, gusto kong i- ano, no, i- um, i-share dito at, ako po, nag- nag- naniniwala ako na dapat na, na dapat nasuportahan uh, 'yung bills na makicreate ng ganyan. So that um, ma-institutionalize sila, mawa- hindi mawala 'yung ating mga experts dyan sa Philippine Blood Center at mabigyan talaga ng enough uh, compensation 'yung ating mga um, employees dyan sa Philippine Blood Center, tsaka sa DOH. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Castro. We now recognize uh, Honorable Magzino.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Sa ating pong lahat, magandang hapon po. Uh, you mentioned po sa DBM po ito. You the, you, uh, the DBM does not encourage the establishment of the trust fund by law for the benefit ng ating GOC or agency for reasons of transparency and more efficient utilization of funds. May I know po, into what circumstances the B- DBM would consider supporting any proposed uh, measure or creation of a trust fund? Especially po, to allow an agency to retain its own generated revenue, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, pursuant po doon sa uh, uh, letter po nga ng uh, Economic Team po sa, sa uh, leadership po ng Congress. So uh, minimum kahe po ng uh, naiwasan po 'yung ano, 'yung uh, paglalagay, paggamit po ng uh, income retention at 'yung trust fund, dahil nga sa umiiral po na one-point policy, para magkaroon ng uh, kasi nga ang, ang, ang ating pong stand ay dapat pumasok lahat buo yun sa ano, sa ay uh, BTR at pumasok po as mag-undergo po ng uh, vegetarian process. Nang sa ganun po ay mas uh, nakikita po 'yung uh, Nang sa ganun po ay mas nakikita po 'yung naiskrutinize po ito ng Kongreso. At in the same manner po as manadbibigyan po ng more elbow room po 'yung national government sa paglalaan po ng ng pondo ng pamahalaan given po na hindi naman po sasapat ang pera ng bayan para po pondoan 'yun lahat. Sa tanung po ng ating pong kagalang-galan na Congresswoman, 'yung mga existing po na income retention at trust plan po ay hinahayaan na po 'yun dahil umiiyal naman po 'yun. Ang sa DVM po, kung nabibigyan po ng justification po 'yung paggamit nito, alin 'yung sunod po sa klarong mandato po ng ahensya, batay po doon sa batas po na may papasa po, ay nagigil po, nagigil po 'yung DVM po dito sa polisiya na ito. Lagi-lagi po ang aming panawala po, mas alam po ng ating pong mga mangbabatas kung ano po 'yung mas makakabuti para po sa ating bayan dahil 'yung naman pong ating pong pangsang budget ay dumadaan din naman po sa Kongreso para po sa approval po, para po sa iskrutini po ng mga bawat ahensya. Kaya po hindi po absolute 'yung aming pong stand tungkol po dito. Bagamat edo po 'yung guidance na ibinigay po sa amin, hangga't maari, i-discourage po natin ito para mapanatili po 'yung one-pantality po ng pamahalaan. Pero palagi-lagi po na kami po ay nagigil po sa wisdom po ng Congress dahil mas nakikita po nila 'yung mas malawak po na kalagayan po ng ating bansa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, may I proceed po?
Please proceed, Honorable Magzino.
Thank you po. Republic Act Number Seventy Seven Ninety, known as the National Blood Services Act of nineteen ninety-four, promotes voluntary blood donation to provide sufficient supply of safe blood and to regulate 'yung mga blood banks natin. Pursuant to this law, the National Voluntary Blood Services Program of the Department of Health is targeting the youth as volunteers in its blood donation programs to heighten consciousness among our youth that blood donation is a humanitarian act. The Philippine National Red Cross, the National Blood Services, has observed that there is a downward trend among our youth as a major source of blood collection in the recent years. May I ask, can the Department of Health confirm the policy and validate the cited observation of the P N R C regarding our young blood donors? And if so, how do we address this, Mr. Chair?
Department of Health, Director Tan?
Good morning, Honorable Congresswoman. As of now, ma'am, we do not have the, we cannot confirm that data yet because we do not, or we did not receive any report on that yet. We will update the committee on that, ma'am.
Okay. But do you believe po, Dr. Tan, that the youth is the very source of our blood donors?
I believe so, Honorable Congressman, as they are as what they are saying. They are also the future of our nation.
Okay. May I proceed, Mr. Chair?
Please proceed, Honorable Magzino.
Thank you po. RA seven one one nine upholds the policies of providing for adequate, safe, affordable, and equitable distribution of supply of blood and blood products and to curb the potential health hazards that may be caused by the commercial sale of blood. Consequently, the law mandated the phase-out of all commercial blood banks. House Bill Number Eight Eight Two Zero proposes to reverse the policy by allowing the establishment and operation of private-owned blood plasma collection centers. As safeguards, the said bill provides that the plasma shall be collected only from the qualified donors and that the operations of these private entities shall conform with the standards set by the D O H. The rationale of the proposal is to address the disparity in the supply and demand of blood plasma. May we hear the position of D O H on this proposal of House Bill Eight Eight Two Zero? Does D O H have any safeguards to recommend to ensure the safety of the blood plasma that will be handled privately by blood plasma collection centers as proposed in the said bill, Mr. Chair?
Director Tan?
Honorable Congresswoman, on the mentioned section, it is not on the Department of Health as to, I believe it's under the Food and Drug Administration on the blood plasma po because these, all the blood components and other things needs to be to undergo, what do you call this? Parang it has to be looked into for the safety and other before it is being given to anybody po. So it needs the approval by the Food and Drug Administration prior to any distribution. So we do not actually have as of now the position on that section po, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Chair, because this is a proposal from one of the filed bills proposed. And then may I ask, Mr. Chair, kasi in my personal experience, when we ask blood donors or from the blood bank, it has to be processed from the hospital itself and then kung saan po i-ooperah or ang procedure will take place, ipoprocess po uli 'yun blood. So parang ang payment po ng ating mga pasyente ay nagiging doble po. From the source ng blood, kung saang hospital, then kung saan po gagawin ang operation, is this a practice? Or is it mandatory? Or depende po sa hospital na magagawa po ng procedure sa patient, Mr. Chair?
Honorable Congresswoman, thank you po, Honorable Chair. The blood centers can only, can process plasma, can only process plasma. That's why all others are being processed in the hospital for compatibility po.
Okay. So if it's processed 'yung plasma, talaga may certain fee po ito. So automatic po may certain fee and then sa hospital, iba pa po 'yun, 'yung pagpa-process nila.
It's the same lang po, Honorable Congresswoman.
As they can also ask for ano, payment for that processing uli?
Usually, usually the ones that they are charging if they process it, it's for the reagents or based on the policy of the hospital also, Honorable Congresswoman.
Okay. So kung if we are asking for a donor or for a blood from the blood bank, ano po 'yung usual process? How do our people connect to you? Kasi hindi naman po lahat, walang po tayong masyadong awareness. Information, information, awareness is very important po and it's so hard. A lot of people, mga OFWs, are asking us, saan po kami makakakuha ng blood? So hahanapin lahat namin ang mga direktoryo ng mga blood donors. Can you elaborate on this po?
Sorry, Blood Donor Registry. Actually, the Blood Donor Registry is under the National Voluntary Blood Services Programs Information Management Unit. There is a National Blood Bank Network System which houses the Blood Donor Registry and the data from all participating, ideally all the, but not just the participating, certain certain blood service facilities and certain agencies do not submit data for the Blood Donor Registry. But that is under the purview of the National Voluntary Blood Services Program, which is under the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau of the Department of Health.
Mr. Chair, one last question po, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Magzino.
Thank you po, Mr. Chair. Like for example, I need the blood. Where do I call immediately na madali po makontak at makakuha po ng blood? Whether in N C R or in the provinces? Ano po 'yung pinaka, may hotline po ba tayo? Sino po ang dapat ko kontakin? Di po lahat alam 'yung mga regional offices ng mga blood banks natin?
Since not all regional offices have a blood center, usually what happens is they are referred to the nearest, the nearest blood service facility that serves that region. Or in the case of the P B C, we actually have a direct hotline, a number for the Blood Assistance Unit. Now, this is what we are trying to enforce, sorry, not enforce, that's not our mandate. We are trying to recommend that the burden of getting blood and blood products to be transfused onto the patient shouldn't be a transaction between the relatives of the patient. They are already stressed as it is. So therefore, the hospitals themselves and the blood service facilities themselves should be coordinating directly with us. And that's why we always try to tell them, dun, 'yung mga patients, when they call us directly, tawag 'yung blood bank punin niyo, 'yung blood service facility punin niyo, tumawag po dun sa Blood Assistance Unit po.
Mr. Chair, thank you for that. Mr. Chair, follow-up lang po, Mr. Chair. Follow-up lang po, Mr. Chair. Tama po 'yung sinabi niyo, Mr. Edri. Kasi po, ang mga hospitals po, marami na po kaming cases, whether personal at sa mga OFWs po natin ang sinasabi, kami ang pinahahanap ng mga hospital kasi wala daw po na available na blood. Can you imagine stress na po, i-stressing ka pa sa paghahanap ng blood? Magkaroon ba tayo ng magandang coordination with the hospitals that they should be the one responsible? Hindi 'yung pasyente, kami pa maghahanap?
There is a department memorandum or department circular that actually says that there should be no familial nor replacement blood donor because that actually goes against the spirit of RA seven seven one nine, which is non-remunerated voluntary blood donation. Any form of, any, any blood bank personnel who tells 'yung relative, the palitan niyo for every blood unit consumed ng dalawan donors is a form of coercion in itself and goes against, again, 'yung RA seven seven one nine natin. Now, unfortunately, as the Philippine Blood Center, we do not have the power to police this. We only, we can only remind the satellite blood service facilities under us as the lead blood service facility for West Sector Metro Manila, as well as the Regional Blood Center for National Capital Region and Region Four A, as well as some adjacent provinces. We remind the blood service facilities that, again, they contact us directly rather than putting the burden of looking for blood and blood products from the relatives.
Mr. Chair, may I have po 'yung hotline? Pwede ho bang masabi ngayon 'yung hotline para madali? Opo.
So the, the number of the Blood Assistance Unit of the Philippine Blood Center is zero nine four three, three one four, two eight seven three.
Two eight seven three. Okay, may sasagot po dito ha?
Yes po.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Actually, our, our policy has always been within ten minutes dapat nakarrespon.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you po.
Thank you, Honorable Magzino. Before we proceed with live talk knowledge, the presence of Honorable Vice Chair of this committee, Honorable Peter Miguel of the Second District of South Cotabato, Honorable Salvador Pleito of the Sixth District of Bulakan, Honorable J C Abalos of the Four Piece Partilis, and Honorable Bonifacio Rosita of One Rider Partilis.
Mr. Chair?
We now...
If I may, from the Philippine Red Cross po, just, just, if you may allow me to further elaborate the process of a distribution of blood based on the query of Congresswoman po.
Please make it brief.
Yes, very, very brief po. You mentioned earlier, ma'am, from the requestor or from the blood service facility, this is being transferred to the hospital. So from the blood service facility, these are already tested, processed. So when this reaches the hospitals, the policy of the government, it is, it should no longer be retested po. Because by policy, 'yung blood service, service facility should have retested and processed this. So when you transfer it to the hospital, may batas, may policy na po ng Department of Health regarding no retesting policy that is actually embedded in, in D O H two thousand and eight zero zero, zero eight. And 'yun nga lang siguro, ma'am, the problem right now is the enforcement po. So unfortunately, nagre-retest po rin po some hospitals ng blood po from the blood service facilities like the Philippine Red Cross or perhaps the Philippine Blood Center. And thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, reaction lang po. Reaction lang po. Mr. Chair, that's the very reason, kasi po nagdodoble-doble po 'yung burden ng pagbabayad ng pasyente. Nagbayad na po ng malaki, magbabayad na naman. Paano kung wala ng pambayad? Anangyayari po, they are asking, sino 'yung pwedeng makatulong pambayad? That should not be the burden for the patients itself. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Magzino. We now recog...
Ma'am, this is just a follow-up. Kasi 'yung donor natin, they have to go to the blood center to donate blood. Hindi po pwede, ma'am, di sa hospital na naconfined ang patient, so they will not go to the blood center anymore. Kasi it's very expensive on the part of the family of the patient. Wala nga silang pambili po na masayahang pa natin.
If I may po, from the Philippine Red Cross. There are certain hospitals, private hospitals or government hospitals allowed to collect blood only po for reasons that replacement donations are happening in the hospital. Replacement donation post-risk in the blood supply, primarily because there is a window period. If in case, we get a donor na contaminated po, ma'am. And most, most, by, by study po, there's a high risk of transfusion transmitted infection in replacement donation. That's why the Department of Health deem it necessary na to reduce or just to allow some hospitals, private or government hospitals, to collect blood and let the non-hospital-based blood service facilities do the blood donation through voluntary, non-remunerated blood donation po.
So ma'am, pwede din po in the hospital or to the blood center, ma'am?
Yes po, ma'am. That's why po, kaya nagkaroon ng policy ang D O H that there should be no longer retesting of blood by the hospital is because nga, nagdodoble-doble po 'yung binabayaran po ng pasyente. This blood coming from a, a certain blood facility who already processed everything should now again pay blood, the retesting fee in hospitals po, kasi nga, nireretest po. But again, as I have said, meron na rin pong policy this allowing po for retesting po. But it is not fully enforced po.
So ma'am, sa mga government hospital, do they need a machine to test the blood?
Yes po.
So ma'am, how much 'yung machine natin? So if the, if the government can provide that?
In the Philippine Red Cross, ma'am, we have a, a machine and reagent tie-up. We don't pay for the machine, but we pay for the consumables and the reagents po. So it's given us, for us, for free for as long as we buy this consumable. But of course, we have to evaluate every reagent that we use in accordance with the recommendation of the Department of Health.
Okay nga, ma'am. Just in case lang, if the government will buy the machine, how much po 'yung machine?
I'm not privy po to the cost of the machine because the Philippine Red Cross doesn't, doesn't buy machine. Perhaps from the Department.
Anyone from the Department of Health?
Honorable Congresswoman, and we are very sorry, we do not also have the amount for the machine for the, because ibang bureau po kasi bumibili, but we do not have the amount because what we check is only the facility po.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, may add po? We now recognize Honorable Salo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much also for including my House Bill, House Bill Number Nine Four Five Two, Mr. Chair. And we great to thank our resource persons as well as our members for coming and discussing this particular matter. Mr. Chair, I just respectfully note that this is akin to our bill on the OFW, creation of the OFW Hospital. For a fact that OFW Hospital, there's already one existing in Pampanga, and yet we don't have a charter. It's still operating, but the challenge is every year, we have to fight for budget for it. The same thing here, Mr. Chair, we have a Philippine Blood Center. It's already created, constructed, and operating. And yet every year, they have to fight it out to get funding for it. And this is precisely the reason, Mr. Chair, why I filed this particular proposed measure to grant or give opportunity to give a charter to this particular Philippine Blood Center. And of course, Mr. Chair, I don't intend to address all issues or concerns relating to blood because this, my proposed measure is very specific. For the creation of a Philippine Blood Center, Mr. Chair, which is a specialized hospital, same, I understand that we just passed here a specific law creating specialty hospitals, seventeen of that, but blood is not one of them. This is the reason why I filed this particular measure. But nonetheless, Mr. Chair, for the education of everyone, including myself, inasmuch as there are several offices relating to blood, we have Philippine Blood Center, we have Voluntary National Blood Services, Voluntary Blood Services, perhaps I may, I just be educated exactly how are these offices different from each other? And how are they complementing each other in order to ensure the adequacy of blood supply in the country? As well as the one that was mentioned a while ago, it's the accessibility, as well as not only the accessibility, but ensuring that in this, you have an access, but it's something that is reasonable. You don't pay for the blood, quote-unquote, you simply pay for the services. That's, I understand, that's the whole policy behind this. But may I be informed, Mr. Chair, who in among our resource persons would be able to give us a clear delineation of the functions of these various agencies or offices within the government that has mandate relating to blood?
Dr. Edri Alcántara. So in terms of, in terms of the National Voluntary Blood Services Program, it was created together, it was created when RA seven seven one nine was passed. It basically was supposed to meet organically with various interest groups relating to blood, including the Philippine Red Cross, the Philippine Blood Coordinating Council, which predates RA seven seven one nine. And this always, first and foremost, when it comes to blood services in the, the country. So when somebody thinks of a multi, multi-sectoral, a multi-organizational body when it comes to blood services, the P B C C for health workers is the first one that comes to mind. With regards to, on the part of the, on the part of where it is led by the government, there was the Philippine National Blood Services, which was which was conceptualized in Administrative Order Two Thousand Five dash zero 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 two, which is a conglomeration of, again, the different agencies, some of which are also members of the P B C C, and some of which, again, part of the P N B S. And there is also a technical working group within the Philippine National Blood Services, which is part of the, which is the National Council on Blood Services. It was, it was quite a complex administrative order and, but to simplify, there are members in, members of it are the Philippine Red Cross, the Philippine Blood Coordinating Council, the Specialty Societies, the Philippine Association of Medical Technologists. So specialty societies with regards to clinical pathology and with the, sorry, with the Director of the Philippine Blood Center, originally envisioned as the Secretariat for the National Council for Blood Services. But according to the institutional memory of the P B C, the National Council for Blood Services, so institutional memory, I am a relatively new new member of the P B C itself. The National Council for Blood Services has never formally convened within the past six or seven years, according to the people who have stayed there for the longest time. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, I would rather request for a written copy of this particular delineation of different functions of these various offices. Inasmuch as we're going to have a technical working group nonetheless, because that's what I was informed, so chair. So perhaps I would rather request for a written copy and in order to ensure also that the next bill, because our supporter, fellow legislators here, particular Representative Remel Tiangara on the creation of, or establishing the municipality province of Aurora tertiary hospital to be known as the Aurora Medical Center and appropriating funds there, for Mr. Chair. I will yield my time to the next interpreter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Salo. Yes, as I, as directed earlier, all resource person are requested to submit deposition papers to the committee. Thank you. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of House Member, Honorable Eleanor Bulot Begtang of the Lone District of Apayo. Thank you very much. We now recognize Congress Honorable Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning po sa ating lahat. Siguro po, gusto ko lang po magbigay ng perspektibo mula po sa baba. Bilang naging isang tunong bayan po ng siyam na taon, sa bayan po ng dinalupihan, lalawigan po ng bataan. Ang realidad po natin sa baba ay, kung meron tayong pasyente at nangangailangan po tayo ng dugo o binigyan po sa ng prescription, ah kailangan po ng blood transfusion, ay kung wala pong available na dugo doon sa hospital, ay doon po nabibigyan ng problema 'yung ating mga pasyente. So 'yung access po talaga, 'yung pinaka-problema po natin from the ground. Pero 'yung access, masosolusyonan po natin kung number one, functional po 'yung blood service network po natin. Katulad po ng nabanggit kanina, hindi po dapat problema ng pasyente, 'yung maghanap ng dugo. Dahil kailangan, 'yung mga ospital ay nag-uusap-usap at sila 'yung dapat maghanap ng dugo para po sa kanilang pasyente. Pero hindi po ito 'yung nangyayari kadalasan on the ground. Bakit po ito hindi nangyayari? Kasi po kulak 'yung dugo. Kung walang dugo doon po sa mga blood centers sa ating pong mga lalawigan. So marami pong aspeto ang dapat din po natin tinitignan. I fully agree po with Mr. Kenneth Punsalan sa kanya pong suhestron dito po. At katulad po ni Congressman Akop, 'yung intent po ng lahat ng bills ay talaga pong fully supportive po ang inyong lingkod. Para po magkaroon ng access, aside from functionality po ng network, kailangan po mapalakasin 'yung mga blood centers na nasababa. So parang may konteng misconception na wala pong blood centers ka da probinsya. Sa probinsya tunang bataan, meron pong dalawang blood center. 'Yun po ay inooperate ng Philippine National Red Cross at 'yung pong inooperate ng Bataan General Hospital and Medical Center, which is a D O H tertiary hospital. So meron pong blood centers sa mga probinsya. So hindi ko po alam kung nasaan po 'yung perspect, 'yung, 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 parang konsepto na wala pong blood center sa mga probinsya. Pangalawa, tama po na kailangan po natin taigtingin ito. Kasi kailangan po palakasin po natin 'yung mga blood centers na existing kung kailangan po sa geography na malalayo po 'yung mga bayan-bayan. Sa mga probinsya, kailangan din po natin siguro madagdagan 'yung mga blood centers. Aside po dun sa mga blood centers, kailangan din po natin madagdagan 'yung mga pasilidad na nagkokolekta ng dugo. Kasi wala pong ipoprocess na dugo kung wala pong mga pasilidad na magkokolekta ng dugo. And para po sa kalama ng lahat, ang pagkolekta po ng dugo ay pwede pong gawin kahit saan. Sa covered court, sa elementary school, sa isang function hall. So ang ating... So, ang ating pong target ay kailangan one per, minimum one percent ng population nun lalawigan ay makapagbigay po ng, uh, dugo. So dapat makakolekta po tayo ng target na ito. And ito po ay binababa po natin sa bawat barangay, sa bawat LGU, at sa bawat probinsya. So kung mapapaigting po natin 'yung pagko-lekta ng dugo, 'yung supply ng dugo natin ay mapapanatili po nating sapat, 'yung network po natin ay functional, hopefully, 'yung mga pasyente po na may kailangan po ng dugo ay hindi na po mahihirapan. Um, sa LGUs po, gumagastos po ang LGUs para po mangolekta ng dugo. Uh, siyempre, nagpapakain po tayo sa mga magbibigay ng dugo, kung ano po 'yung mga kailangan gawin. So siguro, suggestion ko po, Mr. Chair, na magkaroon po tayo ng convergence efforts. Baka pwede pong makatulong ang iba't ibang mga ahensya para po ma-insure na monthly, uh, twice a month, regularly nakakapagkoleta po tayo ng dugo. Number two, um, uh, kailangan po siguro 'yung sa pagtatag ng mas mga bagong blood centers sa lahat ng mga government hospitals sana, kung sasapatin. Kasi ito po, aside from HFEP, kailangan po natin ang manpower. I believe medyo strict po 'yung, uh, paglisensya ng blood center. Kailangan ng pathologies, ng tatlong medtech, ng mga nurse, at mga clerk. So, kailangan po siguro ng Philippine Blood Center and the DOH, bigyan din po ng budget aside from HFEP. 'Yung operationalization ng mga blood center na ito. At pangatlo po, ang pinakamahalaga siguro sa mga pasyente ay 'yung pagbayad. Uh, unfortunately, hindi ko po nakikita ang kinatawa ng Philhealth dito po sa ating taam, yun din. Pero sa akin pong pagkakaalam, hindi po narereimburse ninety-five percent ng mga ginagamit na dugo sa mga government hospitals ng Philhealth na, na mga naka-admit na mga pasyente. Kasi hanggang ngayon po, ang baba po ng mga case rates ng Philhealth. So palagay ko, dapat kung sinasabi natin na essential medicine ang dugo, kailangan siguro, uh, mapataas 'yung mga case rates, uh, na gumagamit ng dugo sa mga admitted patients, and mapag-aralan din po ng Philhealth 'yung mga dugong ginagamit sa mga hindi admitted sa ospital. Kasi sa mga nagda-diagnosis at sa mga ibang mga pasyente na outpatient basis 'yung transfusion, lalo na po kung mahirap po sila, uh, no problem, kahit na may access, wala namang po silang pambayad. So hopefully po, once po sa TWG na ating i-create, baka po, um, ma-akuha natin 'yung ibang mga ahensya, Mr. Chair. DSWD, uh, para sa pagtulong sa mga voluntary, uh, blood donation, 'yung mga LGUs, kasi sila po 'yung very active sa pagkuha ng mga kabarangay at constituents para mag-donate ng dugo. Hindi po ito ginagawa ng mga ospital. Sila po'y nangongolekta, pero 'yung nag-facilitate na marami pong mag-donate ng dugo ay 'yung mga barangay at 'yung mga LGU. Sana po may kasama po natin sila sa TWG, and most importantly po, sana 'yung Philhealth sa reimbursement po natin ng processing, uh, ng mga dugo. At sa mga hindi po admitted na mga pasyente, 'yung mga outpatient na nangangailangan din po ng dugo. Yun lang po, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Garcia. We now recognize, uh, Honorable Fortes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good, uh, good morning to everyone here. I am one of the proponents of a bill. In the crafting thereof, I made, uh, continuous representation with the, uh, Blood Bank Center. The, the only existing piece of legislation that we have now is, uh, RA 7719. And based on the Republic Act, the DOH, which was mandated to establish and organize a national blood transfusion services network, gumawa po ng programa. And, uh, the program was, correct me if I'm wrong with, uh, the, the resource person. The program was established under the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau. Is that correct?
Yes, the National Voluntary Blood Services Program is under the, the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau B, which is, uh, the side of the DPCB that houses the programs themselves.
Okay. Now, under the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau is the Voluntary Blood Services Program, which consists of two things. One is the program, and the other one is the services consisting of the facilities. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Who heads the program?
Uh, because of Department Order 2022-0423, there is no more, uh, there is no more, uh, direct vertical programs, but rather integrated health services. So the actual head of the program itself is the Bureau Director. So the Bureau Director is Director Raisel Nikahaw.
Who is the Bureau Director?
The Director Raisel Nikahaw.
Is he here? And into she?
No, she's not here.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I am representing, uh, Director Nikahaw.
Okay. So, the budget comes from the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau? The budget to cover the Voluntary Blood Services Program?
There is a separate line item for the.
How much is that?
Uh, for, uh, 2024, it's, um, six hun, around six hundred twenty million, but that includes already the budget of the Philippine Blood Center, as well as the other blood centers, uh, Mr. Chair.
Now, the six hundred twenty million, is it divided for the centers and the program, or just for the centers?
It is, uh, distributed among the centers as well.
Decides on the division between the program and the centers?
The, the centers are submitting proposals to the disease.
What is the percentage of the division? How much? What's the percentage goes to the program, and what is the percentage that goes to the center?
If I am, uh, if I recall it right, Mr. Chair, the, it's about, uh, sixty percent for the central and forty percent for the, uh, blood centers. But, uh, uh, we'd like to emphasize also.
Forty percent on the facilities and sixty percent on the program, more or less?
More or less, Mr. Chair.
Now, who decides on this? How, how, i- is supposing the, the facilities need more funding?
The, the, the national program also sub-a lot funds to the blood center. And as if I'm not mistaken, although the sub-alotment is based on the previous, um, performances of the blood center, Mr. Chair.
Now, clearly, from what I heard from the blood centers, they need funds. They need, they, they, they would depend on the, uh, discretion of somebody up there for their MOOE, for their, uh, job orders, contract of service to these employees, because they are fully dependent on the program. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair, and largely the budget also for the blood center goes to the Philippine Blood Center.
So this structure is not fully defined, but depends solely on the program? Meaning how many permanent employees does the blood center have currently?
Uh, permanent plantilla, uh, around eight of them, uh.
Eight?
Eight, yes.
And they cater for the whole of the blood program in the Philippines?
Only specific for the Philippine Blood Center, so yes.
In Manila?
In Manila, yes.
How about the other regional blood centers?
Uh, from our data, it's under the Centers for Health Development, so the regional offices. The regional offices of the Department of Health.
So, apparently there is a problem as to the structure of the blood centers. Kalat-kalat kayo. And that would be made possible by the passage of a bill at own charter, putting up your own structure. And presumably would enhance services and easier access to blood needs. Because we have unlimited number of stories na nangangailangan ng dugo. And when you say blood, it's always in the level of an emergency. And a thirty-minute or an hour delay would make a lot of stories. That is tragic to hear. Kaya siguro, with this, bigyan natin ang estruktura ang blood services with your own plantilla, with your own system, and with your own funding, probably we can limit tragic stories on access to blood. So currently, naestablese natin na ganun ang services. It is just under the program of the DOHs. Wala itong sariling plantilla, wala itong sariling estruktura. Do you agree with me?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, if I may, uh, the regional blood, the, the staffing of the regional blood centers, as well as the blood centers of the government hospitals, are under the supervision of the CHD Directors.
CHD Director?
That's correct.
Same with that, even the blood center here in Manila is under the supervision of the CHD Director?
Yes, currently, thanks to the Department Order 2023-0423. Yes, uh, the Philippine Blood Center has been transferred from the Central Office of the DOH to the Regional Office of the DOH in the National Capital Region. And it's now functioning primarily as a regional blood center for Metro Manila.
Okay. And with, uh, the, 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 the proposed bills consisting of eight, visualizes a centralized blood center headed by one single director to manage the whole blood services in the Philippines?
Uh, yes.
And that is more ideal than each region having their own blood centers?
Um, from, uh, from the original, uh, from the resource stratific, stratification framework uh, created by the Philippine Blood Center, what was proposed was either one, uh, director, a director general for the Philippine Blood Center and Philippine National Blood Services, uh, or each, um, regional blood center is headed by, uh, its own director, uh, that are, that are semi-autonomous from, uh, from the central national, uh, blood center itself.
Yes, and that is the aim that we would like to accomplish by the passage of this bills being proposed.
Yes.
And you fully agree to that, and that would enhance the services that you are currently providing?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Fortes. Um, Honorable Bosita is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Napasalap 'yung pagconsult, uh, pag-usap namin ni Honorable Congressman Akop. Nag-name-up pa. Pero interesting po 'yung issue namin.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, ang concern ko lang po dito is about dito sa House Bill 3348, introduced by Representative Vargas. Amending Republic Act Number 7719, otherwise known as the National Blood Services Act of 1994, promoting voluntary blood donation. Mr. Chair, uh, gusto ko lang pong maalaman, of course, hindi lang po bilang member ng committee, but as a advocate, representing motorist. Dito po ba sa blood donation, maaring malaman po natin sa Red Cross, ano po ba ang benefits ng mga blood donors?
Blood donation sir is, uh, purely voluntary, no? So basically, uh, it should not be transactional. Benefit in terms of, uh, health, yes po, uh, but, um, in terms of accessibility of blood, of course, as a blood donor po, um, every, everyone coming to our facility naman is given, uh, priority, no? So, but of course, we do assess, uh, the, the most, uh, uh, emergency cases. So, that's all I can say po. But, uh, what can I assure is, even when there's a need and you come to our facility, or you can even call Red Cross, uh, hotline, that's the 143 or the 1158. We, even when, uh, our facility, one facility doesn't have the necessary supply, we can network to the nearest facility and reserve the blood, uh, uh, for the patient.
Mr. Chair, naitanong ko lamang po 'yan, kasi marami po nating kababayan ang humingi ng tulong, especially kapag kailangan nila 'yung blood. And, uh, kapag humingi po sila ng tulong, pinag-uusapan diyan kasi kailangan daw ng ganitong amount para maka-abail ng blood. Kaya nitanong ko ito, Mr. Chair. Kasi po, katulad nga ng nabanggit ni Honorable Congressman Pancho from Blakan, ang usual na nadidinig natin, pag nag-donate ka ng blood, may libreng balot. So, ano po ang punto natin dito? We cannot deny na 'yung blood na galing sa iba't iba nating mga kababayan, nagagamit sa negosyo. Kasi, ng bawa, may kapamilya tayo, kailangan ng blood, kailangan mo ng cash. Eh, kung nabanggit po ng Honorable Representative Roma Red Cross, na walang issue doon, kasi hindi ito transactional, na katulad na ibang business. Eh, ako po, as advocate, at nakikita ko, ang daming riders na voluntarily nagbibigay ng blood. Then, pag may kapamilya sila na kailangan ng blood, kailangan ng cash. So parang, Mr. Chair, parang hindi ko nakikita na may tama doon eh. Na, if they donate blood, pera yun. So ano naman ang benefits? Parang, ang nakikita ko po diyan, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chair, once na nagbigay ako sa'yo, dapat naman, in the event na kailangan ko, bigyan mo ako. So 'yung po ang concern natin, kasi nabanggit po kasi dito, blood donation eh. And, uh, sana, mali ako, there are organizers na may ginagamit, magaling gumamit, nakakakuha sila ng blood donors, may hidden agenda. So naninegosyo, 'yung blood. So para, sayang, mali, uh, kumbaga, Mr. Chair, ang ganda nitong House Bill sa pinag-uusapan natin eh. Ang ganda ng intensyon eh. Ang punto lang dito, Mr. Chair, ilayo doon sa sistema na parang nagagamit o nasas, napapagsamantalahan 'yung mga ibang, ilan nating mga kababayan na nagagamit dito sa ganito, sa particular sa blood donation. So if I may, Mr. Chair, kailangan dito po sa punto na blood donation ay, once I donate, hindi naman ibig sabihin, pag nagbigay ako, Mr. Chair, kailangan palitan mo. Ang punto po dito, once nagbigay ako, pag naman kailangan ng kapamilya ko, kaibigan ko, or anybody na hingi ng tulong sa akin, may investment ako, may share ako, dapat may makukuha ako. Yun lamang po, Mr. Chair. Marami salamat po.
Thank you very much, Honorable Bosita. Uh, we now recognize, uh, Honorable Begtang.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good morning to all po. Uh, I agree with, uh, I support the statements of Congressman Bosita. Kasi sa amin po sa province of Papaya, we are very supportive in terms of 'yung, uh, voluntary blood donation programs natin. And I have to manifest also my support to all the bills filed today. Anyway, uh, being discussed today, but anyway, uh, same po 'yung aking concern with that of Congressman Bosita and Congressman Garcia, that, uh, whenever, since, uh, in our province, very active po ang blood donation program, but whenever they, these donors go to the hospitals. but whenever they, these donors go to the hospitals, nahirapan pa rin po sila to acquire, uh, blood, pag nangangailangan po sila. In, in fact, pinapabayaran, so this is a challenge to us in the province. Kasi po, sabi nila, voluntary sila when they give blood, but when they are in need of the services, like when they are, uh, being admitted to hospitals or in, and are in need of blood, binibili na po nila. So, ano po kaya ang pwede natin gawin tungkol po dito? Kasi dito 'yung challenge eh, how can we, uh, ask people or our communities to donate? When, in fact, when they go to the hospitals, nagbabayad naman sila. Another thing is, hindi ko po alam kung meron pa rin 'yung blood donation card na binibigay dati, uh, when I was also an executive in our town, but I heard na wala na po yun. Maganda po sana na lahat po ng nagdodonate, nabibigyan naman po ng card to identify them as donors. Para po, kung if ever we are going to have programs to reciprocate 'yung, 'yung voluntary donation na ginagawa po nila, uh, sila po are, uh, they, they will become priority, uh, for such services. Kasi ang dami namang pong pwedeng gawin, like the suggestion of Congressman Garcia, the field help can also help them. Ang ginagawa po namin sa province as an incentive is that, diba may blood screening po tayo, whenever we do donations, nililibre pag nakikita po na during the screening, ay, may sakit 'yung gustong mag-volunteer. We make it a point na libre na ang checkup ng mga, uh, uh, tao na gusto mag-volunteer, pero may po, may sakit po sila. So sana meron po tayong activities, uh, to also, uh, show our donors na this is a program na dapat, uh, give and take ang benefits na ibibigay po. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Begtang. Uh.
Honorable Congressman, that is noted po.
Uh, I would also like to point out that blood in itself is free, but the reusage of the reagents, the, uh, the materials, the blood bags, the, uh, machines, the equipment, as well as the licensed health professionals who help produce that, uh, that blood, they also need to be compensated. So what they are paying for is not the blood in itself, but actually the processing of the blood.
Uh, Mr. Chair, sana po yun 'yung tignan natin po, kasi volunteer nga po 'yan, and most of the donors come from, uh, indigent, uh, indigent communities or families. So sana yun po 'yung tignan natin na, sana may konting subsidi rin na mapupunta dun sa mga ganung cases where, uh, our, our donors are indigents po.
Uh, in, uh, in the several of the bills that were filed for the mandate of the PBC, there is, there are actually, um, there is actually a provision for indigent programs. Thank you.
Uh, that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much po.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Begtang. Yes, uh, Honorable Pancho?
Uh, support lang po ma'am. What we're talking about is the donor. Sana we can give the donor a gratitude card or priority card. That's all what we're asking for. Hindi naman 'yung kinukumpit mo kaagad 'yung machine, 'yung expenses ng ano eh. That's not the topic. The topic is the, uh, special, um, attention for the donors, a gratitude card or priority card for the donors on in case of emergency.
Um, I, as a blood galloner myself of the Philippine Red Cross, there are, there is actually a card that is given, uh, every time that I donate blood. So, yes, we are recognized as a blood donor my, as a blood donor myself.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Mr. Chair, nabanggit po 'yung card? Kung may card po ba ako, alimbawa, nagdonate ako, let's say, three times, may marireceive po ba ako, Mr. Chair, na tatlong cards? And what are the equivalence of every card?
The card in itself isn't a guarantee that you will, uh, that you will be, uh, given blood in case of need, because that actually goes against the spirit of the national, uh, of non-remunerated voluntary blood donation. Now, here's the thing we always remind our blood donors. Uh, blood donation in itself should be of your own accord and again, uh, should not be, there should not be any form of coercion, there should not be any form of, uh, concept of replacement of familial donation. Now, uh, when you incentivize, uh, people to donate blood, the, the matter of, um, is it still voluntary? Is it still, uh, non-remunerated? Come, comes up. And that is, uh, something that has to be, uh, looked upon if we actually, uh, if we actually incentivize blood donation.
Uh, Mr. Chair, excuse me. Considering na ang, ang involved po dito, 'yung mahirap na nating mga kababayan, pwede po ba, Mr. Chair, na explanation ang ating honorable, uh, represented, uh, resource persons? Tagaluhin po natin para alam po ng mga nagdodonate ng blood?
Yes, uh, Alkansari.
Ulitin ko po ang tanong, kapagka po ba tayo nagdonate, especially, huwag na tayo, kasi hindi naman tayo nagpapayabangan, pero can afford naman siguro tayo na bumili ng blood. Ang pinag-uusapan natin dito, Mr. Chair, 'yung mahirap nating kababayan, especially the riders and other motorists, and the others na mahirap. Pagpo ba nagdonate sa Red Cross, three times, sa ilimbawa? Dahil, Mr. Chair, may mabubuting, uh, kababayan natin, though, hindi nila iniisip 'yung magiging pakinabang nila, pero we are here para sa kanila. Kaya nila, nililinaw po natin, Mr. Chair. So, kung 'yung isang certain individual, three times nagdonate, wala siyang iniisip na kapalit. Pero dahil pinag-uusapan po natin ito, hindi sila nag-iisip ng kapalit, pero dapat po tayong mga nasa position, tayong mag-isip ng kapalit para sa kanila. So, Mr. Chair, kung three times nagdonate 'yung certain individual, three times siyang nakareceive ng card, ano po 'yung kapalit na pwedeng ibigay sa kanila?
Ang isa sa mga taraan na ginawa ng Red Cross, uh, and something na ano, something na gusto rin namin sanang gayahin dito sa Philippine Blood Center, ay, ang pag-recognize ng mga tinatawag na blood galloners. Uh, sa, dahil, uh, hindi masyadong ano, na napagbigyan na, nabigyan ng ano ng, uh, priority 'yung aming mga ceremonies dun sa Dugung Bayani Awards, hindi kami nakapag, uh, nakapag-set up ng Dugung Bayani Awards. Uh, dun sa susunod na taon, sa twenty twenty-four, ang plano namin, uh, ay, i-include 'yan dun sa mga regular na nagdodonate.
Mr. Chair, excuse po. In the interest of time, kasi pati yun, hindi naman ako lang yun nandito para entertain 'yung aking prairie, for 'yung clarifications, nandito po 'yung mga honorable colleagues. So simplhan na lang po natin, Mr. Chair. Ulitin ko po ang tanong, sa mga nagdodonate po, sabi po ng Red Cross, meron kayo binibigay na card. So, kung ang individual o 'yung donor nagbigay, nagdonate three times, so may three times siyang rereceive ng card. Ano po ba 'yung tatlong cards na yon, ipapalamine it niya para ipagyabang niya na mabuting tao siya? O ano po 'yung magiging pakinabang niya? Simplhan po natin, may mapapakinabang po ba sila dun sa card o wala? Kung meron, ano po? Para hindi po masayang 'yung ating oras, huwag na po tayong mag-explain ng kung ano-ano pa.
Mr. Chair, I am from the Philippine Red Cross, okay? Uh, on donations, um, definitely, we provide the card. Uh, yun, yun na record of donation. Number one, uh, in assurance, uh, somehow, as a matter of gratitude po, we do prioritize our blood donors, pero it doesn't necessarily mean na 'yung mga hindi nagdodonate, hindi rin natin pinaprioritize. Siguro, iyan po 'yung isang benefit. Uh, second po is, in cases where our, uh, patients are indigent, we have our blood Samaritan program, wherein we source out funds, may it be from a private, individual, corporate, even the local government units, nagbibigay po sa Red Cross para 'yung corresponding blood processing fee po ng mga indigent patients natin na hindi makapagbayad. Dito po natin kinukuha po 'yung pondo. As what mentioned by Dr. Alkansari, uh, earlier, a blood service facility operation should be sustainable, no? Uh, kailangan po natin 'yan, just so we can operate continuously. That's why there's a blood processing fee that we charge for pay patient. For indigent patient, covered po 'yan sa Philippine Red Cross ng blood Samaritan funds po namin. So, kung mga ilangan po, at ito po ay indigent, free, free, no service fee po. Siguro yun po ang simpliest po na pwede kong.
Thank you, Doctor, uh, Nalupta. Uh, may I just gently remind Doctor Nalupta to please, uh, wait to be recognized before, uh,
Sorry, sir.
speaking, and please address your, uh, statements to that chair. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, be allowed to, uh?
Yes, Honorable Bosita.
Mr. Chair, uh, with all your respects, sir, Red Cross, actually, for me, with all your respect, hindi ako paabor to sa sinasabing priority, 'yung nagdonate. Huwag po sanang ganon, regardless kung nagdonate o hindi. Ang punto po dito, ano 'yung napakalinaw at madaling maintindihan ng mahirap nating mga kababayan na once they donate blood, may ma-expect sila. Simplhan na lang po natin, or hindi pa po ba natin ma-icategorize ano 'yung simpleng benefits ng mga ito? 'Yun po ang gusto nating ipaalam sa ating mga kababayan eh. Na once nagdonate ka, may kapalit, may mahihingi ka. Actually, linawin ko lang po, on behalf of our mahirap na kababayan, hindi naman sila nag-iexpect na nagbigay ay may kapalit. Yes, nandun to lang po tayo sa posisyon na tayo ay may kapangyarihan para linawin ito. Dahil, yo, yes, I agree. May processing requirements, facilities, et cetera, et cetera. Pero still, hindi kayo ma- pwedeng mag-process ng anything without blood. Still, ang importante pa rin doon 'yung blood. So, hindi po ba natin, miss, ang punto po dito, simplhan natin para sa mahirap nating kababayan. Kung nagdonate ako, five hundred ml, say, for example, five hundred ml, hindi ba kayang madetermine na kapag may kapamilya ako, wala naman gustong magkaroon ng emergency. Ang punto, Mr. Chair, pagka-nagkaroon ng problema, may kapamilya ko, may kaibigan ako, blood donor ako, at least alam ko, madam, may, may bibigay ako sa kapitbahay mo, base sa programa ng Red Cross, may one, one thousand or five hundred ml blood ako, eto gamitin mo. Then magclaim sila through hospital, SOP na, automatically, with your, with the initiative of, uh, hospital authorities, sold na 'yung one thousand ml na kailangan mo. Kailangan pa ganito. Yung bang, maging claro po, para we as advocates, we can easily promote na masuportahan, kung may sabatas na ito, madali tating suportahan. Kasi madaling mga ampanya o mga kababayan 'yung libre dyan, healthy dyan, magdonate kayo. Ito ang benepisyo para pag 'yung kapamilya mo nangailangan, wala ka ng problema. So, kung healthy ako, donate ako ng donate, baka one galon na 'yung blood na ano. So, ang pag-usapan po natin dito, blood, regardless kung maliit, dahil siyempre, we understand may other requirements dyan, facility, blah, 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 processing requirements, equipment. Okay yon, hindi 'yung kinukwestion. Ang punto natin, Mr. Chair, magkaroon ng malinaw na, na polisiya, na again, lilinawin ko, Mr. Chair, when we say voluntary donation, from the word voluntary, hindi naman pilitan eh. Pero ang punto dito, 'yung blood ng mga donors, we cannot deny na may pera dyan eh. No, sir, ang punto ko dito, bakit? Kung 'yung bang can afford na nangailangan ng dugo, di po ba magbabayad siya? O sampu bagaling yon, may share nun, so. Ang punto dito, Mr. Chair, maging malinaw para mas magiging successful itong magandang batas na ito. Dahil kahit ako, kung malinaw sa akin, Mr. Chair, mangangampanya ako sa mga riders, sa mga motorista, magdonate tayo para makatulong sa, tayo sa ating mga kababayan. Para kung mga ilangan naman kayo, huwag kayong mag-alala, may programa ang Red Cross. Madali tayo magkeclaim. Kumbaga, nagbigay ka, nag-share ka ng five pesos, at least may babalik ka pa ng two pesos. Dapat klaruhin lamang po, Mr. Chair. 'Yun laman po. Maraming salamat.
Thank you, Honorable Bosita. We will, uh, we will thoroughly discuss this in the technical working group, uh, on the, uh, on your proposal to maybe give something in return, but I think under the present law, um, donation is purely voluntary. And, uh, the word donation means that if you give something, you don't expect anything in return. So, I think, um, and the DOH and the Philippine National Red Cross cannot give a categorical, uh, answer, uh, to your question of what is, what can we give in exchange for? Maybe during the technical working group, we will, uh, uh, discuss some form of incentive, incentivization, um, in the technical working group. Thank you very much, Honorable Bosita. Yes, Honorable Akro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I ask, uh, Doctor Alkansari, if I got you right? That there shall never be any incentive for blood donation? Did I get you right?
Yes.
Yes, there shouldn't be. Yeah, but, but your law, Republic Act, uh, uh, seven-seven-one-nine says it's allowed, provided it is non-monetary. Would you agree with me?
Uh, tokens, uh?
I'm asking you a question, will you agree with me?
Yes.
Yeah, so, hindi absolute 'yung sinabi na walang, uh, incentivization ng pagdonate ng blood. That's wrong, doctor, kasi because the law say so. And I would like to read under section four, under paragraph A, the last statement, voluntary donors shall likewise be provided non-monetary incentives as may be determined by your department. Yun ang batas. Why are you changing the intent of the law? Kaya siguro, nagfi-fail, 'yung blood donation program natin, if I ask now, uh, since nineteen ninety-four, the enactment of this law, if I ask you directly, na nagagawa niyo ba na supplying 'yung kailangan na dugo ng ating mga kababayan na nangangailangan? Or your program, has it been successful through the years to supply the basic need na mga nangangailangan? Kasi 'yung mga statement niyo ko minsan na hindi ko maintindihan eh. Please answer that question.
Director Tan?
Uh, Honor, uh, Honorable Chairman, maraming salamat. May I request po Director Gerard, who is now acting for, in behalf of Director now, for the program, since sila po ang nag-implement po, Honorable Congressman?
Director Bellima? Um, Mr. Chair, um, Congressman, of, all throughout the years, the National Voluntary Blood Services Program naman has achieved its target of one percent blood collection among the general population. So, um, only in, during the panden- pandemic na medyo bumaba, but in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, bumabalik na rin naman po 'yung ating, uh, blood collection rate. And, um, if I am also allowed to, um, maybe add additional information, Mr. Chair, it's the, this one percent, uh, target of blood collection among the general population. Ito po 'yung magbibigay ng assurance sa ating mga kababayan na pag magparticipate tayo ng blood donation, there will be more than enough blood supply sana. So that will be the ultimate, uh, goal ng program natin.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, Honorable Akop.
'Yun pong one percent na target po niyo na blood collection from the population. Uh, sino po ang nagdetermine nun? And what is the basis of such one percent?
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, um, it's, um, it's a global recommendation from the World Health. Although there's now a pattern from other neighboring countries to increase the target from one percent to two percent. So, there are now countries, uh, working on two percent target po.
From your experience, 'yung bang if we increase it to two percent, would the needs for blood, uh, be satisfied by two percent collection? 'Yung makolektor niya from the two percent?
Mister Chair, that's-
From your experience, because you're the ones on the ground eh. Kaya gusto namin malaman 'yun.
Yes, Mister Chair, that's the, that's the basis of the WHO recommendation. Na pagka-ma-achieve mo nga 'yung one percent, at least in the past, uh, in the recent past years, uh, we will be assured of, um, adequacy of our blood supplies.
Uh, are you telling us that we cannot came, uh, come out with our percentage based on the need of the people of this country?
Oh, for, yeah, for now, Mister Chair, I, I, I guess we are working on current recommendations and current, um, expert advice to the Department of Health from World Health Organization, Mister Chair.
Mister Chair, I will now expound on the, the problem presented by the Honorable Bektang and the Honorable, uh, Bosita. On the ground, ang totoo po, pag nangangailangan ng pasyente ng dugo, whether indigent or mayaman, pag wala supply ng blood sa hospital, ang sabi ng hospital ay mag-produce kayo ng donors. 'Yun ang nangyari. Kung meron namang dugo dun sa hospital, ang sasabihin ng hospital ay gagamitin namin dito 'yung available na supply of blood, tapos papalitan ninyo. That is what is happening on the ground. Why? Nasubukan ko eh. Ako nag-produce ng donors in so many instances. Ganun ang nangyari. As a matter of fact, 'yung mga sundalo kong ano, ang pulis ang nagdudonate. Para lang palitan 'yung ginamit dun sa kasamahan namin na nasugatan nangangailangan ng dugo. That is the reality on the ground. And therefore, that tells me, or it brings me to the conclusion, na hindi enough 'yung blood supply natin. Would you agree with me sa gadoe?
Yes po, Honorable, uh, Honorable Chairman. Yes po, Honorable Congressman.
And would you agree with me na 'yung sinabi ko po ay nangyayari on the ground?
Yes po, that is po the reality.
That is where money comes, uh, will come in. Dahil 'yung pasyente o 'yung relatives na pasyente, pag sinabi ng hospital na pa-produce ka ng donors para ipalit dun sa kuwan, nagbabayad na siya sa mga donors. And this is one of the stumbling blocks of your program. Would you agree?
Yes po, Honorable Congressman. Dearly noted po ang lahat ng comments na, and we will look into that po.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Akop. Uh, we now recognize, uh, our Vice Chair, Honorable Miguel.
Salamat po, Mister Chair. Um, gusto ko pong mapicture out 'yung effect nitong ating bill. Because ang, ang nangyari po sa ground is that, ang providers po ng dugo ngayon eh, Red Cross, and in some cases, 'yung hospital like provincial hospital sa, sa probinsya. With this bill, Philippine Blood Center, magkakaroon ba ng another blood, uh, facility sa isang probinsya with this bill? Ano ba ang, pwede kaiba nitong bill na to sa existing, existing practice?
Uh, Honorable Chairman, uh, Honorable Congressman, sir. Actually, the, some of the bills here are in support on the establishment of the blood centers and other blood facilities in the different regions. Uh, based on the datas that we have, that currently we have the sub-national blood centers that distributes on Region Six and Region Seven and Eleven and Davao. So, with this po, this will be, uh, having additional blood centers on the different provinces and cities as well.
Magkakaroon in the near future with, um, if there is funds that will support it. Additionally, of course, we will foresee also, sa dami na magbibigay ng services, mababa ba o ba 'yung singil sa blood, uh, processing fee? Because right now, the practice is that every patient would need, at least would pay around one thousand eight hundred pesos for that blood processing fee as far as, uh, Red Cross is concerned. And on some cases, provinces, provincial hospital, medyo political, some would be have it for free. Pero pag hindi, di kid kay gob o kaya ano, eh, ibabayad muli. With this blood center, Philippine Blood Center, uh, would you still collect the blood processing fee the way Philippine National Red Cross and other agencies are collecting right now?
Uh, Honorable Chairman, yes. Uh, Honorable Congressman, sir Peter, uh, we will, the Department of Health with this, uh, bill, we will also look into what we can do in, especially on the processing of the blood, the fees. Because currently po, the prices are based on the amount that are being, uh, spent on the processing of the blood. So, we will look into it where, especially for the indigents and other as well that will have to shell out money. We will look into that po.
It's my common understanding that if the government would enter into this uh, versus the prevailing practice of Red Cross, there is some sort of expectation. Mababa po 'yung singil dahil gugod na na ito. Philippine Blood Center pa 'yung pangalan. Otherwise, if you won't see that in the near future as effect of this bill, might as well maintain with the present setup wherein the Red Cross is providing blood efficiently and I, or as far as my experience is concerned. Uh, 'yun po, kasi sustainability is another thing. Mabigat to kung buong Pilipinas, magkakaroon tayo ng blood center, so. Mabigat pero maganda sana kung 'yung effect niya ay mababa 'yung magiging, uh, processing fee ng mawat patient. I understand there should be a fee. Well, mahal talaga 'yung reagent, mahal 'yung gamit and so forth. So, but, uh, 'yung nakita kong mandate ninyo ng PBC, parang ang duplication na rin ng Red Cross. May training, may kung ano-ano. 'Yun lang, uh, if we're gonna spend billions para lang makummitong Philippine Blood Center, why not publicly support the existing facilities that's already serving our, uh, constituents? Instead of another office, we'd spend billions and yet hindi rin mababa 'yung facility, uh, 'yung fee ng blood processing.
Uh, Honorable Chair, permission? Honorable Congressman, we will review po 'yung sa whatever the bills are, uh, included there and especially on the processing fee, i-re-review na rin po ng Department of Health. Just a, just to ano lang po, take note that the Philippine Blood Center is actually now under the National Capital Region with the, a region center for health development, which is also under the Department of Health. But the Philippine National Red Cross po is also not under the Department of Health.
I understand that. It's just that it seems that the PBC, Philippine Blood Center, is just localized in Metro Manila. So, about the provinces? 'Yun ang nakikita ko kasi na walang size sa ito. Kung it will just apply in Metro Manila or NCR. How about us in the provinces?
Sorry. Uh, Honorable Chair, that would be also the point of having your regional blood centers and your sub-national blood centers. And these, uh, sub-national and regional blood centers don't, likewise do not have a mandate just like the Philippine Blood Center.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, if that is so, who would be the face of the government when it comes to blood services in the provinces? Kung walang mandate 'yung national agencies niyo sa region, sino ngayon 'yung mukha na magbibigay ng ganito? The way Philippine Red Cross is having?
Um, ideal, uh, in practice, the regional director, uh, who is a directly, um, in authority of the, the existing regional blood centers or for the sub-national, uh, usually the, the central office of the DOH itself.
So, 'yung mangyayari po, it's regional DOH pa rin ang magiging office for this. In our case, Region Twelve, wala akong nakikitang facility from the region that would cater, that would serve this purpose. So, in effect, we will build one. We will have a budget for this one. So, I can imagine medics, doc pathologist, uh, storage facility, blood testing, uh- Actually, sila 'yung naghihirap. Tumupunta sa barangay, naangolekta ng donors, their strategies collecting blood. Eh, ang nangyayari po parang, ba't to, another layer of governance, parang duplication na lang to ng another layer of, 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 of. Parang dagdag na to, eh, dami ng mahawak, may national, may ganun, may region. But in, in fact, why don't we just support the existing government programs like the provincial government, enhance it? Lagyan ang, instead the billboard pa 'yung malaki, eh, di, lagyan ang pondo doon, additional facility and all, and complement that's existing in the region, in, in the, in the specific hospitals located in every province or in every region. So, 'yung nakikita ko is that creating a bigger body, why don't we just decentralize all of this so that services will be accessible to the constituents?
Yes, uh, Mister Alcansare?
Um, Honorable Chair, according to the recommendation of the World Health Organization, uh, producers and manufacturers of blood and blood, blood products shouldn't also be the consumers because there is, there is and will always be accountability issues, especially in terms of uh, hemovigilance in case the blood produced, uh, leads to an adverse, um, an adverse, uh, transfusion reaction in the patient. Who gets to be held responsible when the consumer or the one who uses the blood is also the producer slash manufacturer? And in terms of, uh, policy, uh, recommendations by the WHO, a centralized, uh, blood services system is actually more desirable because it allows for hubs, allows for better, uh, networking, allows for better distribution of the blood and blood products where they are needed. Thank you.
Mister Chair, just big to disagree is that about the adverse reaction by the donors, as the collectors, there is no instance that there is a, a blood reaction or adverse reaction with the practices going on today wherein the provincial government or the Red Cross is collecting bloods from barangays and all. And my question is again, kayo na mag-strategize, pero paano kayo kukuha ng blood? Saan kayo kukuha? If ever, what's your strategy then? If hindi natin i-aala, kukuha 'yung government hospitals like the, the provincial hospital to donate blood to, to the donors, ano ang strategy niyo? You said earlier that there na 'yung patient, hindi sila mahirap ang kumuha ng blood, but where will you get, where will you get the blood para ibigay sa pasyente natin?
Director Tan.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Honorable Chairman. Uh, Honorable Congressman Peter, we would like to clear the matter po that actually, uh, meron po tayong binibili ngayon po sa Region Twelve, beside just Cotapato, ano, medical center, 'yung Philippine Blood Centers. But eh, we would like to apologize po for the earlier comment of Doctor. Uh, actually, we will take note po on all of your recommendations and we will look into this as well together with the technical working group. But just to inform, meron na rin po tayong pinuputup ngayon sa Region Twelve, sir.
Just good, just good. If, if I hear that meron, meron tayong pinuputup doon, ang sa akin lang, we go to the next level, uh, the bureaucracy and the expense to the patient. Right now, ganito 'yan. Uh, lastly, Mister Chair, if you allow, uh, totoo, halos nalilibre na rin 'yung services na binibigay na Red Cross because of their initiatives. Our hearts off to Red Cross. In fact, while dues are giving funds to Red Cross and of course, um, politicians, so, I mean, nag, may godpo tayo may bukas sa, sa weekend. 'Yun, yours too, donor naman po tayo doon. There are initiatives. At ang end, nagiging libre na rin po, 'yung, 'yung, uh, 'yung dugo. Doon sa ating, uh, provincial government, dami nililibre na rin 'yung governor. That's why, kinakita ko, if it would be another layer na magkakaroon ng expense to the patients. 'Yun na 'yung big question ko dito dahil malaki ang gagastosin niyo in order to provide a blood, a five hundred m l blood, malaki ang gagawin ng gobyerno. Sustainability is another issue right now. I've heard early on, the D B M, na eh, eto, tingin ko, maka hindi ma-sustain to. In order for you to sustain this program, I need, I think you need to get a fee from the, from the patients themselves. So, 'yun din ang mangyayari dito. So, ang tangin ko na lang, uh, mahirap establish, but I'm here to study. Prilig, uh, practicality nito, baka duplication na ito ng existing programs.
Thank you, Honorable Miguel. Mister Chair, uh, before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of House, uh, Committee Member, Honorable Nidikuwa of the Alone District of, uh, Kirino, Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar of the, uh, Sixth District of Quezon City, and of course, um, Honorable and Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Honorable Joey Sarte Salceda of the Second District of Albay.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Honorable Bosita.
Mister Chair, ah, by the way, salamat po kaya Honorable Congressman Akop. Kasi na, nakul 'yung attention ko dito sa wag niyang retterence. Mister Chair, dito po sa Republic Act number seven, seven, one, nine, nabanggit po dito on act promoting voluntary blood donation. Dito po sa section four, paragraph A, dito po sa last part, nabanggit po dito, voluntary donors shall likewise be provided non-monetary incentives as may be determined by the department. Sino po bang department binabanggit dito, Mister Chair? Is it DOH? Uh, Director Tan?
Yes po. Ah, yes po, Honorable Congressman, sir, kami po.
Okay, thank you po. Uh, Mister Chair, this act was approved noong May nineteen ninety-four, twenty-nine years ago, nung ma-approved to. Uh, maaari po bang maitanong sa DOH? In compliance with section four, paragraph A, ano po 'yung non-monetary incentives na ibinibigay ng para dito?
Uh, permission po, Honorable Chairman. Uh, Honorable Congressman, bale, the po, the different regional health offices to the program of national voluntary blood, blood, when they have this donation activity on every barangay, which is, as we were discussing earlier, one percent po, talaga binibigyan po sila ng incentive like T-shirt, mga ganun po lang ang non-monetary na kayang ibigay lang po ng programan. Tapos 'yung iba po, dahil ina-encourage po sila din, kasi it will also help 'yung regenerate ng health natin, 'yung parang ine-educating po sila. Tapos sa mga, especially pag ang barangay po or the municipality is fully supported po, talagang ang blood po, 'yung parang available na rin sa kanilang munisipyo. So, if they are encouraged to donate, kung anong nangyayari, available po ang blood sa mga munisipyo nila and city. Kasi doon po, nag, ina-advocate po talaga, ine-educate sila, that it's very important, if you can, we will donate the blood. Kaya 'yun po ang programa sa different region, malakas po ng pag-ano para sa blood donation.
Mister Chair, maaari po bang maitanong doon sa DOH, Honorable Representative? In terms of sustainability, successful ba ito? Eh, sa one to ten, paano po natin i-rate 'yung sustainability dito sa issues of blood? Mister Chair.
Uh, Honorable Chairman, uh, Honorable Congressman, actually po- Honorable Chairman, uh Honorable Congressman, actually po sir, the program has been running since the time that it was uh created, the administrative order. Then po, since nagka-pandemic po, medyo nagkaproblema po tayo dahil alam naman natin lahat po anong nangyari for the past two years. So medyo nagkaroon po ng kasi lahat po ng programa, hindi po tayo lumalaba so datatatakot din po ang mga tao. Pero po ngayon po, nag-i-start na naman po tayo mag-advocate para po mag-donate naman po sila.
Uh Mister Chair, twenty-nine years ito and uh nagkaroon tayo ng pandemic almost two years. So for twenty-seven years, at sinasabi po ng Honorable co- uh Representative from DOH 'yung kanilang programa, which I believe with all due respect, parang hindi acceptable. Nagbibigay ng T-shirt, parang in other words, parang walang konkretong masihan itong non-monetary incentives. Mister Chair, batas kasi ito eh. Kaya dapat po siguro, merong magandang programa ang department and DOH in compliance with this act, particular itong section four. So ulitin ko lang po, Mister Chair, with all due respect. By the way, DOH, magkakaibigan tayo. Ang punto lang dito ay 'yung public service. Sa one to ten, alisinap po natin 'yung pandemic time. Sa one to ten, ano po ang ating ah masasabing rate dito sa compliance sa batas na ito? One to ten, ano pa pa? Is it three, five, eight, nine?
Uh permission po, Honorable Chairman. Uh Honorable Congressman, I would say it's a rate of eight. Actually, marami pong barangay ang nabigyan ng recognition because the National Voluntary Program conducts an annual activity to recognize all the barangays that has achieved the one percent target on the blood donation. So binibigyan po sila ng monet- ang barangay po ang binibigyan ng parang cash gift incentive for them to use in the health ano. Ganun po ang nangyayari, Honorable Congressman. Thank you po.
Mister Chair, magkano po 'yung cash incentive? Sabi dito, non-monetary. And uh sabi po ng Honorable Representative from DOH, kung i-rate natin 'yung compliance, your sustainability is around eight. Eight out of ten. So, uh Mister Chair, gusto po ba sabihin ng DOH na sustainable 'yung kailangan natin sa dugo? Wala tayong problema? Ganun po ba? Kasi eh kung ibig sabihin po, kung out of ten, eight, parang maico-consider natin, we are wasting time here. Kasi okay naman eh. Why we are here? Kung out of ten, nasa eight na tayo, parang napakagandang performance na nun. So Mister Chair, may problema tayo ba tayo sa blood? Kinukulang ba tayo? Or okay naman ah? Mister Chair?
Director Tan?
Yes, Honorable Chair. Uh Honorable Congressman, ang tanong niyo po kati sanin- kanina excluding ang pandemic. So I was saying that at that time, when the program was implemented, I could rate it at eight because I was actually on the different regions po. Nakikita ko po ang mga barangays. Ang sinasabi po natin, itong programa po nakakatulong sa mga munisipyo, sa city, pag lahat po nag- nag- ako volunteer, they uh they help their own municipality and city by providing a safe blood because sila po ang nagbibigay. Ang sinasabi po natin kanina, ang monetary sa barangay, hindi po sa blood donors. Parang incentive sa mga cities na nag- nakapag advocate po sa program. Ganun, ganun uh ganun po yun, Honorable Congressman. Salamat.
With the indulgence of our esteemed colleagues, pasensya na po kasi medyo para sa akin, itong issue na to, mabigat eh. Uh currently, parang hindi na nararamdaman natin 'yung pandemic. Tama po ba, Madam DOH?
Ah yes po, hindi na po public health emergency, but the the disease is still there po, Honorable Congressman.
So huwag po nating pag-usapan 'yung pandemic. Sustainable po ba 'yung blood requirements ang ating mga kababayan, especially doon sa emergency cases, Mister Chair?
Honorable Chair, permission. Uh actually po Congressman, dapat po lahat tayo magtulong-tulong kasi I we can, the Department of Health or people- Philippine National Red Cross can se- cannot actually uh sta- current categorically say na we can, but it is po dapat po magtulong-tulong sa lahat. Kaya po tayo nandito kasi actually, as I was saying earlier, the pro- the program was established because to encourage the people themselves to help donate the blood because all of us needs it. Everyone who are in emergency needs it. So lahat po dapat tayo nakikita, tulungan po, ganun lang po sana.
Exactly, Mister Chair. Kaya po ako'y nangungulit. Yun ang direksyon ko, Mister Chair. The point is, for me, with all due respect, my esteemed colleagues, our uh respa- uh respective uh resource persons, nakungulit po ako dito sa compliance sa to. At nakakalungkot, Mister Chair, ang dami ng paikot-ikot, pero simpleng-simple, hindi po natin makita ang konkretong comple- po uh compliance ng DOH dito sa para uh section four ng Republic Act uh seven seven one nine. So ano punto ko po dito, Mister Chair? Sana mali ako. Walang pag-asa ito na mapromote natin 'yung vol- voluntary donation. Natiniwala ako, Mister Chair, maipromote natin to kung maiklarong programa ang DOH in compliance with section four of Republic Act seven seven one nine. Na ngayon, ay gusto nating ipa-amanda para mas maganda pa. So Mister Chair, hindi applicable tong promoting voluntary blood donation? Kung hindi po natin nakikita sa DOH 'yung magandang compliance, promotion eh. Ano natin, how can we promote? Makulit po ako, Mister Chair, kasi uh with our organization as advocates, kayang-kaya nating ipromote ito. Pero with this response of our Honorable Representative from DOH, hindi ako mag-aatend. Otherwise, parang lulokohin ko 'yung mga donors. So Mister Chair, mahalaga ito. Makitang-kita naman sa sa ano nito eh oh, promoting voluntary blood donation. With all due respect, Mister Chair, ako mismo, hindi ko maipopromote ito right now considering the wala, Mister Chair, malinaw na madinig sa DOH eh. Wala tayong ipa-nga-ko. Oh, ano po ba ang totoo? Kung meron akong produktong gustong ipromote sa inyo, natural menta, dapat maipapanga-ko ako. At kung wala akong maipapanga-ko, uh forget it. Dapat may maipapanga-ko tayo, Mister Chair, in compliance with section four. Pero sabihin nating, nagbibigay po kami ng T-shirt, nagbibigay po kami ng ganito. May cash incentives kami sa mga barangays na tumutulong. Ay parang meron pa nga, Mister Chair, window for korruption. Why? Eh pagka-ako ay, with all due respect, kasi pasensya sa mga barangay official, I am not saying na corrupt sila. Pero kung ako'y corrupt, pwede kong pagkakitaan ng pera 'yan eh. Kaya kong pagkakitaan ng pera 'yan. Meron pa lang monetary consideration eh, hindi sa donors. Pero pag may diskarte ako, kaya ko 'yan. Bobula-bulahin ko lang. Oh. So may problema tayo, Mister Chair. I believe hindi magiging successful itong batas na ito. Kung hindi ma-address ng DOH 'yung issue, particularly 'yung section four, paragraph A. And uh again, maraming salamat po sa Honorable Congressman Ako, dahil sa kanya lang naman actually ako humugot. Ikinonek ko lang, hah, ikinonek ko, ikinonek ko lang po 'yung nangyayari sa sa community. Yung totoo na walang anyway, pare-pare tayong Pilipino. Honestly speaking, kulang antiwala ng community sa mga ganitong programa, Mister Chair. Kasi nga, napag-usapan na po natin, may monetary uh consideration pala. Yes, hindi sa blood donors, pero may mga involved persons. And with that, Mister Chair, nakita ko from that statement, kaya pala may mga ilang leaders na masisipag mag-organize ng blood donors. Dahil meron pa lang sabihin nating, hindi na raw uso ngayon 'yung under the table, ang uso na ngayon including the table. So pasensya, DOH. Wala, I have nothing personal against you. Ang sa akin lang po, gusto natin maging successful ito dahil marami nating mga kababayan ang namamatay na hindi naman dapat pamatay. At tayo'y nasa position na pwede nating kahit pa paano, may magawa tayo para dito. Again, Mister Chair, maraming salamat po kay Honorable Congressman Ako and sa inyo po, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Bosita. Yes, uh Congressman Honorable Salceda.
Ma'am? Yeah, good morning. Um may pag-aaral ba kayo ng demand and supply for human blood for transfusion annually? Yeah, uh so you have an economist in your ano? So okay, so what is the volume of demand? Based on the morbidity and everything?
Mister Chair, um um Honorable Congressman, um unfortunately, the data is not um available at hand right now.
So will you make a law without a data? Okay, um okay na, palapasin ko na yun. Mas alam ko, kailangan ng dugo eh, diba? Is there a moral hazard to paying for blood instead of donation? What is the moral hazard of paying for blood? That is the, that is, in other words, the DOH buying blood? Is there a moral hazard?
I'll, Mister Chair, um Honorable Congressman, may pag-aaral po kasi ang WHO na 'yung mga chronic uh volunteers, chronic uh blood donors ay mas mababa po 'yung kanilang posibilidad na meron silang infection sa kanilang dugo dahil sila po ay continuously nabibigyan ng health education and counseling during blood donation um activity.
Uh alam mo, may pagka- ano 'yan, but I'm talking about so most likely, ang nagbebenta ng dugo ay may sakit? Yun, yun ang meaning nung sinabi mo eh. Can you repeat what the WHO said?
Uh if you're a chronic uh blood donor, you have lesser possibility of having a transfusion transmisib- transmissible infection.
So 'yung, eh so ibig sabihin, kung kung i-incentivize mo by buying their blood, di mas chronic sila and therefore that um that further ano reinforces the WHO observation?
Honorable Congressman, Mister Chair, kaya nga po um ang atin sanang advocacy ay ilalayo or ilalabas 'yung blood donation sa mga hospital.
So ibig sabihin, nakatunganga tayo kung wala magdon- mag-donate, wala tayong magagawa? Ang estado?
Honorable Kong and uh Mister Chair, I guess talagang ito ay eh ang ang blood uh voluntary
I don't know, what is the general framework or the underlying philosophy with respect to human blood for transfusion? What is the moral philosophy behind it? We don't pay for it because why don't we pay for it? But you sell it. You exact a fee, right? For those who use it. So ginagawa niyong ano, so one eight minus zero is equal to one eight. Ang kita niyo? So it's profitable, ano? Tama ba?
Honorable Chair, actually, Honorable Congressman, I believe it's for the processing of the blood.
For the processing of the blood is the one eight.
Oh po.
Why don't you charge it to Phil Health? I never see anything in any of these documents made reference to Phil Health. Page one, page two, page three, all of them have no Phil Health there. Isn't it part of universal healthcare? But why don't you just charge it there? How come there is no reference? Why, why do we need to exact one eight? From from somebody who can hardly afford any an any other thing? So is there a policy? I haven't read it. So where do you get your money? From, what is your budget for twenty twenty-three? Pero ayusin mo na kasi data nawawala, na hindi ako, hindi ako, hindi ako makabigay ng magandang ano kasi walang data. Ano ba 'yung volume ng dugo na kailangan based on morbidity rates or sa epid- epidemiological um configuration ng Pilipinas downtown? Yes, ma'am?
Honorable Chair.
Yes, Director.
Uh Honorable Congressman, you will just provide the data, alam mo kasi as of
So that's data, so where is it?
Uh the Philippine Blood Program, uh they uh the they have an annual report at being
They have an annual report of the supply, but the demand? Is it the demand supposed to be um should be modeled? What you refer to is supply and actual use, but I want the model demand for for human blood for transfusion. I think, Mister Chair, we need the UPNIH around somehow somewhere here. Or is uh PRC, would you be in a position to make an estimate of the general demand of the Philippines annually for human blood for transfusion? And what share of the PRC is of the of this total?
Doctor Nalupta?
Thank you very much, Mister Chair. The um Philippine blood uh demand or requirement um annually is about one percent of the total population. The population is about
One percent, so how much is that in liters?
So if the population is one hundred fourteen um um million, so the annual blood uh demand is one million and one hundred forty thousand blood units annually.
What is a blood unit in liters?
In one blood unit is equivalent to four hundred fifty ml of blood.
So kalahati lang ng litro? So five hundred thousand liters lang? How much is uh PRC able to raise?
Uh as of today, to date, to date sir, from January twenty twenty-three to to date, we already uh were able to collect four hundred fifty three thousand.
Okay lang, okay na. Eto lang itong DOH. Bayaran na lang kayo ng Phil Health sa lahat ng kailangan ng mga to. Tama ba ako?
Of course, we need uh
No, because already, the total demand per year is four hundred fifty thousand liters, right? Because you said four hundred fifty ml.
Four hundred fifty.
So that's half a liter. So that's virtually what it, what we need. So ang kailangan lang natin is you you collect all of it, get paid by Phil Health for it, and then just give this to Director Anetan for distribution. So there will be no more moral hazard. It is the pe- the money of the people through Phil Health. It is the entire concept of universal Phil Health. So kayo bayaran na lang kayo, so magkontrata kayo, umahanap kayo ng four hundred fifty thousand liters of blood, human blood for transfusion, and the distribution will be through the blood centers of DOH. Tama ba 'yung ganung klasing modelo? Ay babayaran naman namin kayo ng one thousand eight hundred. Per liter ba yun, ma'am? Per ml? Per per bag? Oh, per box, one eight. So basically, one point eight billion lang. Tama ba, ma'am?
Uh one point one million blood units times one thousand eight hundred pesos.
For processing.
For the
Well, you don't pay incentives, ma'am, for getting the blood from donors?
We we don't, sir.
But of course, you spend money for the generating that blood.
Yes, Chairman.
How much, how much do you spend to generate one point one million?
Uh for the Philippine Red Cross, our annual budget po uh for our one hundred eight blood facilities is about one billion po.
But with respect to generating the blood?
We're just cost recovery, sir. Talagang very minimal sometimes.
The the one thousand eight hundred is cost recovery?
Yes, sir. And of course, uh we we do are supported by uh like LGUs, uh some partners po for blood um units or supply. for blood um, units or supply dispense uh, to indigenous clients po.
So we don't need DOH now? No, I'm just being, ano, as a cast. No, the, ma'am, sige na, tulungan ninyo kami. Para mababa, para you can concentrate probably on higher order uh, medical requirement, health requirements of the population.
We do, sir. We will support po the Department of Health.
So have you ever collaborated? Like when? When was the last time you collaborated?
Um, in terms of consultative meetings po lately.
Meetings? Wala man, dugo-dugo?
That's, that's, that's how we do uh, coordinate network, uh, uh, yung.
How about uh, uh, do you have like a mathematically determined sharing system? Or like a communication-based uh, sharing system? Pag pumindo dito si Doctor Anetan, we need uh, one thousand five hundred, uh, one thousand five hundred units, let's say, for vehicle in July of twenty twenty-three? How would that be possible between DOH and you? Or you go directly to the hospital, BRTH, for example?
Sir, currently, there is no system of uh, coordination, perhaps, I would say.
Um, ang problema, pinatanggal niya 'yung national eh. Doon sa, uh, creating the Philippine Red Cross?
Yes, sir.
Ba't 'yung pinatanggal?
Uh, because uh, we are a non-government uh, organization and pag may national daw po based on uh, our board, we are uh, thought of being part, a government entity po. That's why from the Philippine National Red Cross, naging Philippine Red Cross.
So, hindi kayo, hindi kayo nakakuha ng subsidy from the national government?
None, sir.
So you derive four fifty kayo? Ilan na derive niyo? Huwag ka mag, huwag ka matiyas sa akin, na kulang laman to. Oh, yes, ma'am.
The Philippine Blood Center, Mr. Two.
Yes, uh, you're a doctor pala, Edred, no? Sige. Anyway, I have a blood center in uh, Albina. Which I would have converted into a heart center, but you insisted in keeping it. So ilan 'yung production niyo last year?
So last year, uh, we were, well, uh, they, they were according to our uh, dashboard, we were able to produce around uh, seventy thousand units of blood.
Yun lang? So talo kayo ng mga yun? Four hundred fifty thousand sila, kayo seventy. Diyos ko! So, mali 'yung sagot sa'yo? Na eight out of ten ang kanilang performer.
But uh, uh, that's for a, for all of the Red Cross uh, blood collection units.
Eh, ikaw, seventy lang.
We're, we're only one blood center for uh.
Ah, ikaw, uh, which is in the, the one in Quezon City?
Yes.
Ang ganda na architecture, pero seventy thousand lang palalaman. No, joke lang. So, the entire blood center system of the Philippines, how many were you able to derive? Or ikaw na lang?
Uh, Honorable Kong, uh, Mister Chair, um.
You know, this Congress is database science-driven.
In twenty twenty-two, the, the total blood units collected was around one point three nine billion.
Doon sa, ano, so we had, we derived one point seven trillion?
That is inclusive of the LGU efforts, the BCU's run by LGUs.
There's no problem.
Lahat na po yun, um, Honorable Kong, Mister Chair.
So 'yung one point three is sobra-sobra sa demand?
That's one point zero eight percent of the total population.
So sobra-sobra yun sa demand. So wa- walang, yu- yu- ilang, ilang, ano shelf life niyan?
It is dependent on the component. So for, it is dependent on the component. So for your platelet concentrate, that's five days. For your uh.
So, short life siya?
Yes.
So five days lang siya?
Only for platelet concentrates, only for dependent on the component.
Mabuti 'yung chairman, doctor.
Uh, dependent on the, depending on the component, uh, platelet concentrates five days, uh, packed red.
But that's nice to know. You, the, the whole system is producing one point six billion units, no? And the demand is only one point one? So, what did we do with the five hundred thousand? With, with they, so sinayang niyo lang 'yung mga dugo, 'yung mga taga barangay ko? Eh, actually, lagi number one 'yung pulangi sa pag-donate eh, 'yung bayan ko. Sa, tinatapon niyo ba 'yan pag, pag hindi na kailangan? Yes, ma'am. That is the, that's the wonder, if there's no moral hazard of paying for it, that's what I'm trying to tell you. Because there's a cost. If there's no cost, and it's free, parang pagmamahal, iiwan ng karina. Kaya ang sinasabi ko, is there a moral hazard to buying blood? Because that is a self-imposed limits with respect to a scarce resources, scarce resource like blood. So, uh, uh, is there any philosophy, I don't know which of you here has a philosophy about human blood for transf- ah, so you have, yes, sir, I'd like to be enlightened.
Um, well, uh, first and foremost, the, the selling of blood in itself will, uh, opens up the possibility of exploitation. It's in, in the same way that we do not sell organs, okay? By law, we are not allowed to sell organs. We're not supposed to sell blood. We, we shouldn't commoditize uh, we shouldn't commoditize parts of our body. So whether these be um, our own organs or blood itself.
And the philosophy is, it's part of the human body?
As, uh, in terms of the pillars of the, of bioethics, it would be non-maleficence itself.
Come again?
Non-maleficence. You are introducing harm with you.
First, do no harm. So, the sale of blood is maleficent.
The concept, yes. The sale of blood can potentially be maleficent.
I learned a lesson. So now, at least I understand. So we have to, just have to make do with the current system, no? Now, you cannot buy blood, but you can provide some incentive for voluntary blood donation. So that is the framework. Simply because you cannot buy blood.
You shouldn't commodify uh, body, uh, organs or parts of the body.
Okay, and then, but, pag processing, you sell. So, where, where is now the commodifier?
The, we are not selling blood, we are paying for the um, the processing.
Okay, I'll take that as it is. Uh, I just want this thing to work, and at least now I understand. So, Mister Chair, I have no violent objection. At least now I understand. But, 'yung ano lang, sobra-sobra ang production natin. Malisinan natin Red Cross, hindi, hindi naman pala ninyo kailangan. Eh, wa- four fifty ka eh, one point one two. Ang kailangan mo lang, one point one. So ibig sabihin, sobra. Tinapon niyo lang 'yung five hundred.
Uh, we would like to request the Philippine Red Cross and the DOH to please submit the data on the, the figures, on the uh, demand.
Mister Chair.
Noted.
Thank you, Honorable Salceda.
Mister Chair, question?
Yes, Honorable Ako.
Eh, kung, eh, kung sobra po 'yung uh, naidodonate na blood, and therefore, wala po dapat 'yung naghahanap pa ng donors para magbigay ng blood doon sa mga nangangailangan? Hindi po ba? Kasi, you're basing your answers on statistics, not on the need, actual need of people. Pero inamin 'yung kanina sa akin, na 'yung sitwasyon on the ground, eh, merong nangangailangan ng dugo doon sa hospital ngayon, kagaya ng aking sundalo, wala na ma- bibigyan nga ng hospital ng dugo, pero papalitan namin galing sa sampung sundalo namin. Ganun ang nangyari eh. If there is enough blood, bakit ganun ang nangyari sa on the ground? Yun ang katanungan ko. Kasi ang sinasabi niyo kanina, Doctor Alcansari, huwag ka na magsalita dahil mula pa kanina, palso 'yung sagot mo sa akin eh. Uh, you do not even know na merong, non-military incentive. Babanat kita. Uh, is there a body in your organization as the National Advocacy and Protect uh, Promotions Subcommittee? Is there? You do not even know. It is within your IRR, Republic Act uh, seven seven one nine. Nandun. You better read it. Kung ako mismo na legislator, dahil itong mga bills na ito, binasa ko. Ikaw dapat, trabaho mo ito eh, basahin mo. Kasi kanina pa ako nakikinig sa mga sagot ninyo eh. Dito, kanina, uh, tinanong ko, ang basis ng uh, collection ng blood is one percent WHO. Sabi ko, I do not agree with that. Why are we being dictated by WHO? Dapat meron tayo, dahil need ng mga tao ang kailangan na basis. Kagaya na sinabi ni Honorable Salceda. Kasi may data dapat, data driven. Now, one of the functions of that the Subcommittee, na sinabi ko, Doctor Alcansari, is that uh, under functions of that National Advocacy and Promotions Subcommittee is the formulation of designs for non-monetary or non-profit oriented incentives for voluntary blood donors. Now, maya, meron na ba kayo nito, na formulate? Then you are not doing your job pursuant to the provision of law and pursuant to the IRR and pursuant to the administrative orders created by your department. Kasi nandito lahat sa akin 'yung copy eh. Tapos nakita ko, piling-iling ka kanina nung nagtatanong o nagsasabi si Congressman Bosita. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ako.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Honorable Salceda.
Uh, 'yung isa talaga, I think uh, we should make a case that uh, it should be a case ready for Phil Health, no? Did you ever make an effort?
Honorable Chair.
Honorable, wala po po. Uh, twenty twenty-one study by the Department of Medical Technology Faculty of Pharmacy U S T shows that the most significant motivation for blood donation is I will donate blood if my family, relatives, or friends need it. Pero, they need it, na hospital na. So next to that, the motivation is I will donate blood if the staff of the blood donation facilities are hospitable, welcoming, and have high quality of care. For the purpose of bolstering the dynamism and responsiveness of our blood supply, however, having, having blood donation when relatives need it is already too late. Estimates suggest that we need at least seven hundred thirty thousand units of blood every year. Given that hospital report needing about two thousand units per day, at this rate, the PRC might be able to collect five hundred forty thousand units of blood this year. We should be short by one hundred ninety thousand. This is my own data, so you can impune it. So it seems to me that the people are not exactly looking for monetary incentive for blood donation, but are not quite ready to donate regularly to mere strangers either. This study suggests that if we improve blood collection facilities, this is an investment that will improve blood donation. The efficiency of allocation will also be critical. We need to be more dynamic in allocating blood, so it has to be stored as close as to where it is needed, contrary to what the WHO suggests, because we're archipelagic. So there's no such thing as a free-flowing logistical network that where in centralization of blood supply can be justified. So we need, so it has to be stored as close to where be, and having a lot of blood stored in Manila when the blood is needed in Mindanao will not be very useful. So here are my demands for this policy. First, we need to keep close track of the demand for blood by hospitals and be algorithmic about allocating and storing blood. So random and nothing data scientist, uh, the A I M is producing hundred blood data scientists every year. Clearly, there's, there's an argument for a strong national database and real-time monitoring. Second, there has to be some sort of incentive. If people are not looking for monetary incentives for blood donation, there should be at least incentive for those who provide the facilities for blood donations, especially if the quality of the facility is the main driver. See, the main driver for blood donation is the quality of the facility. Third, proper storage, handling, and transport is critical. To be data-driven, I would like to know how much blood we waste and whether there are seasons where blood donation is in accurate, in acute, short supply. Uh, thank you, uh, Red Cross for taking down notes, because the DOH did not.
Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Salceda.
Mister Chair. Mister Chair.
Yes, Honorable Garcia.
Just a last query, uh, in terms of um, accountability uh, sa mga blood centers natin, meron po ba sa existing policy tungkol sa wastage? Meron po bang um, penalties or accountabilities sa blood na na, na nag-e expire uh, sa mga blood centers natin? Cause I think isa yun sa dapat ilagay natin para 'yung voluntary donation ng blood ay hindi po masayang.
Honorable Chair. Uh, Honorable Congresswoman, ma'am, wala pong, ano, as of now, there is no.
I beg to disagree with the honorable doctor.
Yes.
Kasi if you read your law, there's a provision on penalties, section twelve of seven seven one nine. And one of the paragraph, I think the last paragraph would be the head of the blood bank and the necessary trained personnel under the head's direct supervision bound responsible for dispensing, transfusing, and failing to dispose within forty-eight hours, blood which have been proven to be contaminated with blood transfusion transmissible diseases, shall be imprisoned for ten years. This is without prejudice to the filing of criminal charges under the revised penal code. So meron, penalty clause 'yung, 'yung ating bata?
Mister Chair, just a follow-up with Miss, uh, Kong.
Yes, Honorable Garcia.
Uh, I think the provision kasekong is um, disposal of contaminated blood, but not good blood that expired. So 'yung question ko po, dahil voluntary 'yung donation ng blood, um, 'yung sufficiency ng supply parang 'yung gamot, ayaw po natin mag-expire, nasinayang po natin 'yung donation po ng blood. So, 'yung, 'yung um, uh, siguro, what I wanted to clarify, doon po sa binasa ni Kong Akop, kasama po ba 'yung accountability ng good blood na nag-expire? Kasi doon dapat nagiging functional 'yung network. Uh, kung functional 'yung network, wala dapat uh, mawalan o makulang o masayang na dugo. And kung walang penalty or walang um, accountability doon, hahayaan na lang natin mag-expire 'yung dugo. Uh, sayang po lahat nung efforts po natin doon sa pag, uh, sa drive natin for blood donation. So, I think yun lang po 'yung makalaking doon sa existing and di tutupod sa deal na tina try po natin i-consolidate. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Yes, Director Tang?
Uh, Honorable Chair, yes. Uh, noted po, Honorable Congresswoman. Actually, uh, ang ginagawa nga currently is networking nga. Kung sinong mas nangangailangan po, doon po, kung lalo ng pa-expiring, marami pong blood si, for example, si a, ano, blood uh, facility, then whoever is, they, they have networking to uh, ano to, padala, ipapadala po 'yung blood sa mas, na, sa National Blood Center po, PBC.
Yes, pero Mister Chair, walang penalty, walang accountability kapag may nag-expire na dugo sa mga blood center. So I think Mister Chair, uh, dapat mailagay natin ito sa amendments natin. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Honorable Bosita. Uh, doon po sa support po kay Honorable Congressman Ram Bataan. Kung wala accountability, syempre po, ang pagkaintindi ko doon, sometimes may nasasayang kasi nag-expire 'yung blood. And uh, I think Mister Chair, ma-resolve itong issue na to, kung merong uh, statistics ang uh, DOH by area, pwedeng may ma-expire, pero kung meron silang statistics, more or less madidetermine dyan 'yung ano eh, parang ano din lang yan, 'yung other product. madidetermine dyan 'yung ano eh, parang ano din lang yan, 'yung other products eh, na napaka-importante po niyan. So sana, Sir Chair, maisama po dito yun. Napakagandang idea po ni Honorable Congresswoman Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Bosita. Um, this is just a clarif- ah, a clarificatory question. How many, ilan na mga levels ng transfusion facilities? Diba may blood bank, blood station, et cetera? Three bang?
If I may be recognized.
Briefly, make it brief.
Currently po, we have seven classifications po of facilities, seven classifications. We have the national, subnational, regional. We have blood banks with additional functions. We have blood bank, blood station, blood collecting units, and apheresis facilities po.
Ah, in terms of the capability to store blood, donated blood, yun ba 'yung blood bank?
Yes po, you're...
Kasi ang problema kasi natin actually, and the reality is, ang problema natin is pag kailangan natin ng dugo, at usually sa hospital, walang available na dugo. So ang kailangan talaga doon, meron talagang facility or equipment na kayang mag-store ng dugo, so that by the time na dumating 'yung emergency patient, nandun 'yung available na dugo. At itatanong ko, ilan sa mga hospital sa Pilipinas ang meron kakayahan mag-store ng donated blood?
Ah, Honorable Chair.
Yes, Director Tan.
Lahat po ng hospitals po, they are capable of storing blood. It is a requirement.
I beg to disagree. In my province, we have two hospitals na hanggang ngayon hindi sila makatagbigay ng transfusion because walang transfusion facility. They cannot, walang facility. So that is in my province. I also know a hospital in Metro Manila na wala rin kakayahan na mag-store ng blood. So may, I repeat the question, lahat ba ng mga hospitals in government ay may kakayahan mag-store ng donated blood, so that by the time na kailangan ng pasyente, available 'yung blood na kailangan ng pasyente?
Ah, Honorable Chair, actually, it is a minimum requirement of the hospital to be able to store blood.
You mean, my blood, it has to have a blood bank?
Ah, blood station.
Blood station means?
Mean, pwede siya mag-store ng blood po?
For how many day? Ah, pagka-fresh whole blood, diba?
Thirty-five days.
Thirty-five days. Okay, kindly, help our province. Meron kaming dalawang hospital doon. Hanggang ngayon, walang kakayahan magbigay ng transfusion.
Ah, we will look into it.
Kasi problema actually, walang, walang available na dugo. Kasi wala 'yung, walang nakastore na dugo doon sa hospital eh. Pwedeng mag-kulekta ka, pero kung walang storage, you might call it storage facility, by the time na kailangan ng pasyente, magkahanap ka ngayon ng, ng donor na magre-replace nung mga dugo na kukunin mo doon sa hospital or sa National Red Cross na meron ng, ah, process, na-process na 'yung blood na yun. Di po ba?
Ah, yes po, Honorable Chair. Bale, Batanes po kayo, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Kasi dalawang island, hanggang ngayon, wala pang kakayahan na mag-transfuse ng dugo. 'Yung dalawang island na hospital. And I also know, dito sa in Metro Manila, may isang hospital, wala rin silang blood pa. I mean, he, blood station. So they have to get the blood, the, the blood from the another hospital or from, ah, National Red Cross. Dito namumublemen, kasi maghahanap ka pa ngayon ng donor to replace 'yung bibilihin mo ngayon na dugo from blood centers. Yes, ma'am.
Honorable Chair, ah, actually, it is a basic requirement of the hospital to have a blood station. Most probably, sir, if ever there are no available blood, sila at that time, makawala po, wala pong nag-ano sa kanila. But it is a basic, ano, requirement.
How about 'yung facility that can process 'yung mga?
Ay, add, parang additional blood service na siya po. Pag may, parang depende sa level po ng hospital, sir.
Republic Act seven, seven, one, nine, nasa mandate nyo ba na kailangan lahat ng region may blood center? Every province, every city? Or is it limited only to two subnational and one national?
Based on the seven, ah, seven, seven, one, nine, every province, every cities, it is indicated po sa Republic. But right now, as stated earlier po, ah, there are local government units that they have their own, but for the Department of Health, we have two subnationals, which is Region Seven, Region Seven, and Region Eleven. Then we also have, ah, the two, the Philippine Blood Centers, and I know one in Kagayay that already has been established.
So, 'yung nga, 'yung Department of Health, dalawa lang ang na, nae-established na?
'Yung lahat na mention ko po, 'yung, ah, 'yung dalawang subnationals, Davao and Cebu, we also have been one in Kagayay and also one the P B C already, sir.
And you, is it part of your long-term program to establish additional blood center?
Yes po.
And for this year, you said, ah, 'yung budget ng?
Two point three, ah, three point five, three, four billion.
Malakuwa six hundred twenty million?
Ayun po, yun ang budget ng program, ng program ng D P C B under, and, under voluntary blood program.
Okay, so you have two point five billion?
Three point five, three, four billion. Ang needed po for the establishment sana of the blood centers in the different provinces and cities as for Philippine health facilities development.
With six hundred twenty million?
Ah, just to clarify, Mr. Chair, the six hundred, ah, around six hundred, ah, fifty million is the approved budget for twenty twenty-four, and we'll check with, ah, we'll check if, um, the data is available for twenty twenty-three po. And, ah, six hundred thirty mil, fifty million is inclusive of the P B C budget as well as the other blood centers.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ah, yes, Honorable Copilar.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would follow through ako with your statement a while ago. Um, kasi province ng Batanes, ah, you need, may, walang backs, ah, blood bank stations, diba? Pero ironically, even here in the King Kason City, ah, mga D O H, um, maraming lumalapit sa akin kasi pambili ng dugo. So nakakatuwa naman kanina marinig na sinasabi nyo na hindi dapat commodity ang blood, diba? Pero bakit ang daming namumublemen? Dahil lumalapit sa aming tanggapan at nagsasabi sila na kung kailangan namin ng pambili ng dugo. Pa-sinasabi nyo, hindi commodity, it's a processing fee. Ngayon, pagkung pwede ka lang kumuha ng dugo, kung may kapalit din na dugo. So pwede ba klaruhin natin ano pa talaga ang polisiya ninyo para makakuha ng dugo, 'yung mga nangangailangan ng dugo? And take note, hindi lang public hospital ang may problema, even private hospital, kailangan bumili 'yung tao na nag-aagaw buhay, bumili ng dugo. Kasi wala daw stock doon ng klase ng dugo na kailangan nila. So kanina rin, pinakinggan ko, okay naman pala, ang dami pala nating dugo. Ah, sabi nga ng World, ah, World Health Organization, one percent lang ang kailangan para makapag-donate, diba? Mag-donate 'yung tao para supisyente 'yung supply natin ng dugo. Pero in actual, alam niyo ba 'yung nangyayari na hindi yun, kabaliktaran lahat 'yung sinasabi nyo? Sinong sasagot?
Any response from the D O H? Director Tan?
Ah, Honorable Chair, permission. Honorable Congresswoman, noted po 'yung mga komento po, ah, bale, actually, that's why the program really is encouraging for the donation of blood. 'Yung mga donors po, ina-encourage for, ini-increase po ang, ah, bale, advocacy for them to, so that the blood will be available na po for the constituents.
Ah, Mr. Chair, through you again, honestly, I really love the, the bill, no? Ah, pero dapat manggaling din sa inyo, kasi sabi niyo, i-incentivize natin, hindi naman pala pwedeng commodity. Diba? O ngayon, hindi siya commodity. Ngayon, kung i-incentivize nyo, bakit sa barangay napupunta? Oo, 'yung, 'yung, ano 'yung napupunta pala sa barangay, 'yung point ko, pera ba? Yun ba ang ibig niyo sabihin?
Director Tan?
Ah, permission, Honorable Chair. Honorable Congresswoman, ma'am, actually, that activity wherein they award all the barangays, and whoever reaches the top three, they somewhat incentivize them for the, for the barangay health station. Yeah, the money can be utilized for the development of projects or on, in the barangays or cities po. Yun po ang ano, nila before.
I think ang pinapoint ko, ah, okay, 'yung barangay, in encourage nila mag-vol, mag- blood donation, okay yun. Pero ang pinapoint ko, ano naman, chlorin nyo muna, 'yung polisiya ninyo, kung paano naman ang isang One de la Cruz na nag-aagaw buhay na, na kailangan ng dugo, eh, marami naman pala tayo, ba't kailangan silang mahirapan at bibili pa? Sabi niyo, hindi bibili, processing fee. Ano ba talaga?
Ah, Honorable Chair, actually, Honorable Congresswoman, it's actually really a processing fee. But, ah, ang sabi nga natin, ma'am, bale, ah, parang, you cannot also give categorically, ah, category, category. Category, answer your mga questions, ma'am, kasi actually, 'yung imang mga data po natin, hindi pa rin nga po compare.
Mr. Chair, honestly, I'm so sad, kasi 'yung processing fee nila, depende pa yan sa amount nung liter that a person needs. Oo, hindi siya 'yung processing fee muna, okay, kailangan ko ng isang litro, so itong processing fee ko na six hundred pesos, ito na 'yung isang litro. Hindi, it varies. It varies depending on the liter or the amount that you need, no, the blood that you need. Hindi siya fix. It's not a process, so processing fee itself, sa aking, ah, point of view. Kasi kung processing fee dapat, isa lang yan. Kung two hundred pesos para makakuha ka ng dugo, kahit ilang dito, yun ang processing fee. Pero kung di depende ang processing fee mo sa need mo ng, ng dugo, I don't know if that is processing fee, you can call that processing fee.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Yes, ah, response from the, the D O H?
Ah, yeah, thank you, Honorable Chair. Honorable Congresswoman, ma'am, bale, the processing fee ko po kasi, parang tina-test po kasi lahat ng bags. So every bag, you need to test for it, for the T T Is, mga ano po, mga kailangang testing sa blood. Kasi hindi naman po iisa ang donor ng blood, iba-iba, so lahat po ng bags na ano, tina-test po.
Kaya nga, Mr. Chair, eh, kung dito commodity at processing fee ito, at marami namamatayang stock, bakit tayo nahihirapan ang isang One de la Cruz na makakuha ng dugo? Paradokto nga ng buhay niya.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, um, from the, from the, ah, from the experience of the Philippine Blood Center, ah, it depends on the blood type that is needed, so for rareer blood types, we are not able, we, it is not, ah, is, if it's not easily available, we have to either look through our blood donor registry, so that, ah, people who have rare blood types can give on demand. Ah, another factor, ah, in itself, aside from the rare blood types, ah, ah, the cycle of supply, ah, beside the demand of for blood and blood products. Ah, at the beginning of the year, ah, with, ah, more activities for blood donation, ah, more activities for blood donation are set aside, so there's more collection, more readily available blood. But at the end of the year itself, ah, there are few, ah, there are fewer mobile blood donation activities, more, ah, fewer activities for blood collection, so the demand overshadows the, ah, the supply, ah, particularly, ah, the last quarter of the year. Thank you.
Honestly, I, I cannot co, hindi ko maintindihan 'yung sagot mo, pero ang punto ko lang dito, ah, Mr. Chair, through you, you have to make sure lang na readily available 'yung mga dugo na sinasabi nyo. Hindi dahil kung may pera lang, kahit dapat isang simpleng One de la Cruz, pwede rin siyang kumuha ng dugo. Kasi pag may kaya, madali makakuha 'yung mga private hospital eh. Eh, 'yung mga public hospital, 'yung mga nag-aagaw buhay na si, or One de la Cruz, kailangan maghanap ka ng dugo usan available na pwedeng makakuha ng dugo. Mr. Chair, you're a doctor, and we know that, um, it is a fact, hindi siya, this is the real situation, real talk tayo dito, ah. Real talk tayo. Yung, wala kayong data, pero to actual, actual situations na nangyayari araw-araw. So inuulit ko, 'yung question, 'yung sagot nyo, I'm, honestly, I'm not satisfied. But importante, at least give us a clear-cut policy, paano ba kayo magbibigay ng dugo? Paano makakatulong sa isang One de la Cruz na kailangan ng dugo? Processing fee ba? Ang processing fee mo gaano katagal? Kung bukas ko kailangan ng dugo, hindi sabi itete-test ko lahat ito, tas magbabayad ako ng processing fee kung ilan dugo ang kailangan. So mahal, nagmamahal siya. Hindi nga to commodity, diba? Sabi niyo, kailangan lang may kapalit na magdodonate din ng dugo. So yun, maraming vague, vague masyado, no? At dapat ayusin natin maging clear-cut 'yung policy nyo pagdating dyan sa pagtulong at pagbibigay ng dugo sa mga nangangailangan. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair? You need a response. Mr. Chair? Honorable, ah, Miguel?
Having heard all the issues discussed, ah, I think, ah, there's a need for a technical working group to work on this. So, ah, Mr. Chair, I move for the creation of technical working group, address, address out all the issues and come up with a recommendation for this committee. I so move, Mr. Chair.
I second.
So there's a motion to create a technical working group to, ah, further and for a more thorough discussion in the, ah, inputs, ah, um, we heard today, ah, and Julie seconded. So hearing no objection, the same is approved. So a technical working group will be created, ah, to be headed by our vice chair, Congressman Miguel. Ah, thank you. Ah, so we now proceed with the, ah, two local bills. Ah, we now recognize, ah, Honorable Romel Rico Tiangara, House Bill Number eight, two, six, six.
Mr. Chair, before we proceed, ah, I would like to manifest to be cause sponsor of the said, ah, bill about, ah, blood bank.
Ah, yes, ah, duly noted, ah, Honorable Copilar.
Thank you, ah, Mr. Chair. Magandang, magandang, ah, panghali o hapon na po sa ating lahat. Ah, alam kong medyo, ah, tagal lang po tayo, but these are pressing matters at hand, and, ah, Mr. Chair, before I begin, I'm here for the House Bill Number eight, two, six, six, ah, an act establishing the municipality of Balair, Province of Aurora, tertiary hospital to be known as the Aurora Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore. Mr. Chair, it cannot be argued that public health care in the Philippines faces major limitations. To the efforts of our past legislators, the country has achieved universal health care. However, despite these efforts, the Philippines still struggles with unequal access to medical care. Cannot be denied that there are, there lies a considerable geographical disparity in the country's public health care system. It differs significantly across the rural and urban areas in the Philippines. A more excellent public health care system is placed in the metro compared to the rural areas. It is unfortunate then that a enormous number of Filipinos rely on public health care. The country's battles on shortage and inadequacy of The country's battles on shortage and inadequacy of staff in hospital facilities continues. Uh perhaps, especially in the provinces and remote areas, it is hard to get the necessary medical treatment due to its unavailability and the difficulty in access from where they are. The same problem on the inadequacy of public healthcare is a major concern in the province of Aurora. Similar to many other rural areas in the country. At present, the healthcare system in the province revolves around only four major public hospitals. Maria Aurora Community Hospital, Kasiguran uh Community Hospital, uh Aurora Memorial uh Health Hospital, and despite their limited resources, these hospitals strive to provide quality healthcare services to the people in the province. It is for this purpose that I sought the passage of a bill which would create a better medical facility in Aurora. The existing public hospitals cater to the medical needs of the people of Aurora, but the capacity of these healthcare institutions to provide healthcare services has been constrained by their limited resources. It is an ongoing and continuing challenge for the public healthcare system in the province. Do it provides every patient their need, medical services and care in order to have access to better medical facilities. The locals of Aurora would have to have travel to hospitals outside the province, including those in Metro Manila. In order to get access to the quality of medical assistance, this entails travel and transportation costs which adds financial burden to the already economically deprived citizens. With the passage of this bill, the said burden involving the general healthcare system in the province of Aurora will be diminished. The establishment of a tertiary hospital in the province which would be operating under the program of the Department of Health is most urgently needed as it will somehow resolve the endless struggle of many of its people accessing quality and affordable healthcare services in the province of Aurora. Before I uh finish, Mister Chair, alam po namin na sa aming probinsya sa maliit, pat magandang lalawigan ng Aurora, meron po kaming isang level one lang na ospital. Sayang nga po na nakalis na po ang ating neighboring province, which is si Congresswoman Midikuwa. Because parehong-pareho kami ng sitwasyon sa aming lalawigan. Kanina, I was listening to the DOH and I think they have all the data. We're all in, all in the same situation na pareho namang tayong gustong tulungan ng ating makakababayan. But on the ground, it's always very, very different. Kung sa dugo, may data kayo na ito ay sobra. Pero on the ground, sa amin din, pag may emergency, wala po. In our case, in the hospital, I've always uh uh stressed this out. Nung nakaraang Kongreso po, um we tried to file the uh uh renationalization of our Aurora Memorial Hospital. Forty-nine bed capacity, level one. Kaya nga lang, ang laging sa aking sagot ng DOH, uh ito ay kailangan because of devolution, ito ay kailangan manage by the local government unit. You and I both know, ma'am, sirs, take a, take a look at the data sa tarhan pertaining to the financial capabilities of each LGU. And it is unfortunate that sa aming lalawigan na hindi po talaga kakayanin. I spoke with the governor and the, the governor agrees with me. Sa PS pa lamang po, if we improve the currently forty-nine bed capacity level one of Aurora Memorial Hospital, the province will need around one hundred seventy-eight million pesos for PS alone. The reason na nilalagay natin yung devolution, lagi sinasabi sa akin ng DOH, now I found a grayish area in the law. Since, ayaw, ayaw po natin sa devolution na DOH siyang magahandle, then I, I considered that I will file a bill, na ito na nga po, that I would create an uh a uh a medical center in Aurora, which will be run by DOH. I have the facts and figures that are on hand. Nagsalita, nagsulat na rin po si R. D. Corazon Flores of Regional Director of DOH. Ang nakalagay po dun, she is in support of the bill, kaya nga lang sa dulo, nakalagay again, Mister Chair, as always, na preferred po nila ay LGU ang magnapapatakbo. If paulit-ulit po tayo ng cycle na ganito, ma'am, sirs, our dear doctors, our dear practitioners, ay wala pong mangyayari po sa ating health systems. I'm relying on the last speech be given by our president na every Filipino should have a chance of being taken care of. It is uh this unfortunate, sabi ko nga po eh Mister Chair, nung uh, nung finail ko po ito sa committee, uh give us a fighting chance, because at the end of the day, uh yung aking mga taga Aurora po ay bumabiyahi pa po ng apat na oras para nasa mga emergencies sa aming neighboring province na Nueva Ecija. Pagdating sa Nueva Ecija, ay napakarami po rin pong pasyente. So minsan, sa pila, ay lagi pa po nahuli kami. We're developing everything in the province of Aurora, kung napunta po kayo dun. Next year, we'll finally have our airports, our bridges, our roads are complete, our facilities are almost complete. But the end of the day, bale, wala po lahat yun kung walang pagkakataong magpagamot yung aking makakababayan. Kaya, I'm pleading to the Chair of this community, to DOH, tulungan niyo po kami. Alam kong malaki yung kakailanganin sa pagtayo ng ating Aurora, proposed Aurora Medical Center. In my calculation, it would at least capital outlay for the building around four hundred million pesos minimum. For the lot development, around twenty million. Yung lot eh, kami na po, kami na po ang bahala dun. Uh if it's needs to be donated by privately, okay lang din po yun. In my calculation, if you have a one hundred bed capacity na level two tertiary hospital, you'll be needing around, sa PS mo, around two hundred twenty-six million, correct me if I'm wrong DOH. But at the end of the day, uh these sums of money will be totally worth it with means saving the lives of my province mate and my constituency, dun po sa aming lalawigan ng Aurora. That's all Mister Chair, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Honorable Angara. Uh, may we hear a comment from the Department of Health, Doctor Between Reyes?
Thank you, Your Chair. Um, I'd like to read the position of the Department of Health. I think you will be familiar, this is a formality from our end though. Um, the DOH recommends that the proposed facility be under the direct supervision and administrative control of Aurora in compliance with the Executive Order Number One Three Eight Series of Twenty Twenty-One, which provides for full devolution of certain functions of the executive branch to the LGUs. Furthermore, the province may also consider upgrading its existing health facilities such as the infirmaries and Aurora Memorial Hospital instead of establishing a new hospital, which requires a much longer time and a higher budget compared to upgrading existing health facilities. Notwithstanding its ownership, the DOH, through the Central Lazon Center for Health Development, may still provide technical assistance and monitor its compliance to standards in accordance with the PHFDP or the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan and the LIPH, as well as the Regional and Provincial Health Facility Development Plan. Thank you po.
Thank you, uh Doctor Reyes. Um, DBM? Meron?
Mister Chair?
Yes, uh Honorable Garcia?
If there are no more uh resource persons uh who would like to give their comments on the bill, I would like to move for the approval of the bill sponsored by Representative Roman Angara. So move Mister Chair.
Second, second.
Mister Chair, uh may I ask DOH, kasi tama po yung sinabi ni Honorable Angara eh, palaging gusto ninyo ang mag-manage yung, yung uh LGU concerned. Di po ba, pursuant to that executive order? Uh, pero kung magpapatayo ng hospital ng yung Aurora, pwede ninyong gastusan from your funds?
Yes, Your Honor.
Just to be clear, uh, yung pagpapatayo ng hospital, uh lahat ng equipment, pwede ninyong gawin out of your funds from DOH?
Yes po, Your Honor.
Ang ginagusto lang ay yung pag-manage ng hospital.
Yes po, Your Honor.
Oh, very clear. Uh Mister Chair, thank you. Uh, I also second the, the motion of the Honorable Garcia. Thank you, Honorable Ako. Uh, so there's a motion to uh, a motion by Honorable Garcia and Julie seconded uh by um Honorable Ako and the rest of the uh members for the approval of House Bill Number Eight Two Six Six. Hearing no objection, House Bill Number Eight Two Six Six is hereby approved. Congratulations. We now uh go to House Bill Number Eight Six Nine Four. Honorable Maria Victoria Copilar is now recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair, for uh my uh sponsorship. No less than our nineteen eighty-seven constitution mandates us to protect and promote the right of, to health of the people. Apart from quality health system, the right to health includes several core components such as availability and accessibility. Availability means there is sufficient quantity of functioning public health and healthcare facility. And accessibility requires convenience and ease of access to health facilities, goods and services. With House Bill Number Eight Six Nine Four, otherwise known as the Act Establishing the Tandang Sora Hospital and Medical Center, a public health hospital will be established in barangay Tandang Sora, Kason City to, to provide an accessible and available healthcare facility primarily to populations of District Six of my, of, of the city. This bill further recognizes the importance and capability of the local government units in the delivery of government services. As the local government, uh government of Kason City will be providing the funds for the establishments and acquisition of lands for Tandang Sora Hospital and Medical Center. Therefore, it is the hum, it is my humble request of this representation for this committee to approve House Bill Number Eight Six Nine Four. Thank you very much, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Copilar, uh Doctor Between Reyes of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be reading again the position paper of the Department of Health. As of current, there are forty-five licensed hospitals in Kason City. Three are under the local government unit, four are under the DOH, four are G O C C's, G O C C specialty hospitals. Currently, the proposed Tandang Sora Hospital and Medical Center in barangay Tandang Sora, Kason City is accessible to the four DOH hospitals, four G O C C specialty centers, and its three LGU hospitals. With an average travel time um of these eleven hospitals ranging from eighteen to sixty minutes um. In view of the foregoing, the DOH expresses its reservation to the establishment of TSHMC given its exceptional bed to population ratio of one is to three hundred fifty-eight number of existing licensed hospitals and accessibility of other hospitals to the proposed hospital. With this, we defer to the Kason City government to determine whether its HCPN needs the establishment of a new hospital under the local government or the expansion and or upgrading of the existing ones for its citywide health system. That's all.
Mister Chair?
Uh, yes, Honorable Copilar.
Oo. Well, in fact, uh, the city government already um uh ac- acquire uh property for the said uh location for our district hospital, because uh we have three million population, voting population in Kason City, pero ang dami namin transient, daming migrant. And our, our district is the only district does not have any public hospital. So, actually, lahat ready na, na-groundbreak na nga namin. So, suppose it's five, uh five uh story hospital, but ginawang seven story ng LGU, so at nakipag-usap na rin kami sa DOH para sa mga equipments. So, the equipments lang naman yung under DOH, but the rest, the land, the building is not under DOH. Yeah, wala silang problema.
Okay, um. Mister Chair, Honorable Ako? Wala po kayong problema kung kayo na po ang magbigay ng uh medical equipment sa itatayong hospital ng Kason City Government? Would you have any objection to that?
We do have an objection to section three that recommends that the hospital be under, we are recommending that the hospital remain under the direct supervision and administrative control of the city likewise.
Mister Chair, LGU po.
Well, I have a question, the medical equipment.
Oo.
So, kaya na po niyo yun, DOH?
I defer to our position po that we are recommending that the hospital operations be handled by the LGU.
Yeah, there's no objection to that. According to the Honorable Pilar, it will be the LGU uh which will be, which will manage the uh soon-to-be hospital. So, uh, it is on record na antanong ko po, eh walang problema yun DOH sa pagprovide ng medical equipment sa hospital.
It's, we have no problem, no objection on it, as long as the, the hospital is managed and operated by the local government. Thank you.
Yes, Honorable Ako? May I move that the uh, the bill of the Honorable Maria Vicopilar be uh approved? So move.
Seconded, Mister Chair.
So there's a motion, so I, Honorable Ako and Julie seconded by the rest of the members of the committee, that House Bill Number Eight Six Nine Four, establishing the Tandang Sora Hospital and Medical Center and appropriating funds therefore be approved. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Okay. Okay, uh, any member who wish to move for?
Mister Chair? Well, I move to uh adjourn, for the adjournment of this uh committee hearing.
There's a motion to adjourn. Julie seconded, hearing no objection. This uh health committee meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much, uh esteemed uh resource speakers and fellow members of the committee.